Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I think about the condolences for Paul J. King. Mr. King was served in the United States Army during the Korean War. Have a moment of silence for him and also those who have passed. And quite frankly, to think about what this day today means. Thank you. I'm not going to take part in this, neither is Mr. George, but to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moving on to announcements from the President.
You're going to just vote on that?
I'm sorry. I always jump the gun there. Vote to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
No? Now move to the next item. Announcements from the President. I've got here the Old Colony Elder Services Family Caregiver Support Program. Are you caring for an older adult, spouse, parent, grandchild, or relative or friend? They, the Old Colony Elder Services, can help. Talk to a specialist, find out about support groups, the music and memory programs, all sorts of great avenues to help. With the elderly complimentary lunch at noon time on October 2nd, 2018. Lunch is at 12:00, presentation at 12:30 at the Bridgewater Council on Aging, which I believe is 144 Main Street. In addition to that, we have the Bridgewater Commission on Disabilities, which is inviting folks to join them Thursday, September 20th at 2:00 p.m. At the Cole Yaton Senior Center, which is 10 Wally Kruger Way. Conversations on Bridgewater's challenges to becoming a fully accommodating community. Come share your experiences in observations. Everyone is welcome. Proclamations, we have none. Citizens, open forum. Any citizens here would like to speak? Being none. Moving on to appointments. We have... Where are these appointments? Got two stacks of papers here, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. First, we have Regina Cohen for the Elder Affairs Commission.
Motion to appoint?
Second.
So moved. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Ms. Cohen for volunteering. She looks great for the job.
Excellent. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? All right, next up, Open Space Committee Nicholas... Nicole Holmes, sorry.
Motion to appoint Nicole Holmes to the Open Space Committee?
Second.
Discussion by either of you?
Nothing.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Moving on. Planning Board alternate, Stephen Geller?
Motion to appoint?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Excellent. Moving right along to Board of Health for Katie Hammond.
Motion to appoint?
Second.
Even seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, being the 7:37 according to my clock, and we have a hearing at 7:40. And we can start a hearing later than the time advertised, I'd make a motion to take Item G out of order.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
None.
No.
Moving to Item G, which is...
We need a vote.
I'm sorry? We do? So let's have a vote on that move. Those in favor of the move?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, we're moving Item G before F. Edition P 2018-017 granting a one-day alcohol and one-day entertainment permit to Black Hat Brew Works, Sells Short Brew Fest III. Move to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Think we have...
You have a presentation?
We do.
Okay.
It's true, we have a presentation. I wasn't sure about the rumors.
I told Sean I prepared a PowerPoint tonight, but really, I just wanted to thank everybody again for their continued support. The Sells Short Pharma Brew Fest has been an excellent event in the town the last two years. We've raised almost $18,000 for local charities. This year is going to be bigger and better than the last two. So we're very excited and, again, appreciate the support from the guests.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
The town manager should take notes, Mr. George.
Yeah. It's a primer for later.
So... Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? None. Excellent. Looking forward. I'll be in attendance. Got a few more minutes.
One.
There you go. Thank you for that correction.
You're welcome.
I can get caught up.
It's 7:40.
Okay. Now we move to the 7:40 license revocation hearing regarding Skip's Liquors. I just want to remind the council that we are essentially the licensing board with this decision. This is a hearing and discussion amongst us and not the public. I'll read a couple of things to ease us into the process. Master General Law, Chapter 138, Section 64 states, "The licensing authorities, after notice to the license and reasonable party, for him to be heard by them may modify, suspend, revoke, or cancel his license upon satisfactory proof that he has violated or permitted a violation of any condition thereof or any law within the Commonwealth." Town Council of Bridgewater will hold hearing on Tuesday, September 11th at 7:40 p.m. On whether to revoke the license issued to Patel Sons Incorporated, doing business as Skip's Liquors, for the premises located on 98 to 100 Plymouth Street, Bridgewater, Mass. The reason for revocation of such license is non-use of the license. Although the Town Council previously approved the transfer of liquor license for the premises at said address to Patelson's Inc., DBA Skip's Liquors, the license has not been used and Skip's Liquors is presently not open for business. The town has made a number of inquiries relative to the scheduled opening, but Skip's Liquors remains closed. So with that stated, I'm going to open the license revocation hearing at 7:40 and 7:41. I'd like to ask that licensee of Skip's, Mr. Patel, approach the podium and explain the violations.
Good evening, Counselor. After the last time I come in, we have made three attempts. Every single inspection has passed. Apparently, Building Inspector Steve Solari came first time, and I asked him, "Is anything needs to be done? Can you please let me know?" He only pointed one thing. When we called for the second inspection, then he points out only two or three things that these needs to be done. Then we call after completing that work, he pointed out another two, three, that this is wrong, this is wrong. We have completed more than what we submitted in the plan on the ramp. It's a three-times modified plan. Bathroom, that was not, never submitted ADA approved. They made us to go through, change the toilet, change the sink, change the ADA wall, everything. But apparently, we have completed everything today. And tomorrow, 10 o'clock, is the final inspection, hoping I will pass it. It's instead of him telling me everything at once, I will accomplish it every time when I schedule an inspection. And it's something else, something else. Apparently, we have done everything, all plumbing inspection, wiring inspection, electrical, fire. Everything has passed. Everything is good.
Is this the point at which we ask questions, Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Patel, thank you for coming. What did you tell us last time you were here?
August 7th.
Yes. What did you tell us when would you be open?
We will be done in three or four days at that time.
So can I stop you for one second, please, sir?
Yes.
Do you have an attorney here with you?
No, I do not.
Is that your choice?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So continue. What did you tell us?
We will be finished in three or four days and we will...
And why did you lie to us?
I did not lie, sir.
Yeah, I believe you did. You said you would be open in three or four days. You did not have all the permits, did you?
We called...
Did you or did you not have all the permits?
Sir, I did not lie. We start scheduling all the inspection at that time. And inspection, in their inspection, they're asking modification to do what you want me to do.
I find that a distinction without a difference. Can I ask the town manager questions, or is it just for the licensee right now?
Well, if we need clarification and for information...
I'll wait. I'll let other councilors ask. No, I'll let other councilors ask. I can wait.
Other councilors? Mr. Wood?
If I can, through you to the town manager. Is the description of the permitting process as the license holder describes?
I can tell you, I know from our inspectors that we have been more than accommodating to Mr. Patel. There are issues. I know that there are, continue to be issues related to his facility that cannot be resolved by tomorrow, or at least I don't believe they can be resolved by tomorrow. And we inspect according to code and according to plan. So to the extent that any changes were required, they were required by code, not by the whim of an inspector.
Yes, Mr. Susan?
Through you to the town manager. Is there a reason why the building official went in there and did an inspection and only said certain things had to be done? And then another day more had to be done? Person at his level going into that building should have gone through the whole thing, done a thorough inspection. Here's the list. Let's get it done. These are the kind of things that continue to aggravate businesses and businesses who want to come into town, hear about them, and say, "There they go again. The same department is dragging us through the mud and they're stalling us and stalling us." That department has to get straightened out. It should be one inspection, whole thing, complete. Here's what I need done, not today, fix that, I come back, something else, fix that. That's the old process. That's the old process that we had a lot of trouble with. And that's the process that we were supposed to be getting rid of. And it seems like the new building official is carrying on of the previous one. Because that's how he used to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. I will say this, that having been pretty close and in regular contact with the town manager and the departments in regards to Mr. Patel's lack of progress, it's the very first time I've heard about this. Certainly not to the degree that, which you're so heavily stating. Brand new out of his mouth is the first I've heard of this back-and-forth, ticky-tack type of... However, he's presenting it, to my knowledge, just as it came from the town manager today, that our gentleman went over there and the list wasn't met. Went back, the list wasn't met. That's entirely to my knowledge and what I have so far. I'm going to go to Mr. Wood at this moment.
Thank you. So in the past 12 months, you've had three opportunities before this board to prepare to open. Back in December, I argued that we should not renew the license because of lack of effort. In January, you told us you would definitely be open in, I think it's March, May, doesn't matter. And then you told us again you'd be open quickly. And then August 7th, you told us, and your contractor was here and told us you had about three days' worth of work. Touch-up paint. I have a stream of people going by that store every single day, telling me the lack of progress, the lack of effort, the lack of people working on the building. It's rather self-evident when the railing's not there, when the, they're having, you know, there's major electrical things being done to the side of the building, when there's still construction. When I look in the windows and I see raw, open pipes and that sort of thing, which I don't know if it's an inspection violation or not. That's not my call. But I can tell you that we've had five weeks with three days' worth of touch-up paint and a couple other things. And here we are again, after we provided a warning, which I think was 9-0 at the last meeting, about this license. And I hear, and I was hoping the town manager would elaborate on things that maybe don't concern occupancy, like the paving issues and some of the other issues that are in the list. That it's, I just haven't seen the effort over the five weeks to satisfy the occupancy permit. And we've had three opportunities this year to get this license to you, and it's failed every single time. And even though you appear to be closer now than you were before, I'm inclined to say that my opinion is that I would revoke the license and let you appeal it to ABCC. I don't think we're that much closer to finished. And I feel very misled a couple times now this year by the presentation of saying, "We'll definitely open by March. We will, we only have three days of work to do. We will definitely be open." And in fact, the last meeting, I think the lean was toward you were trying to convince us to provide the license at that point rather than revoke it. So, you know, I haven't seen the effort put into it. You don't have an occupancy permit yet. That was the goal, right? At that August 7th meeting was to get that done. And I saw how late the railing went up. I saw how late the stairs were being poured. And it wasn't August 8th, 9th, 10th. It was September. And to me, that indicates a lack of use of the license. And so that's my opinion. I'll probably vote to revoke.
Mr. Colm Vos?
I just wanted to clarify something through you to the town manager. If what Mr. Patel says is true about the building inspector citing additional violations upon each visit, do we know whether that's a result of him having overlooked those violations earlier or whether it might be a result of new work that hadn't been done on previous visits?
Honestly, this is the first I've heard of that particular issue. So I know that our inspection team, as I said, has tried to accommodate Mr. Patel's requests for inspections. And they've sort of bent over backwards were the words that they used to try to help. So I can't imagine that any of our inspectors would go in and find something one day and then go back the next day and find some other things, unless it was to identify things that had been done in the interim.
Right, yeah.
But I can't tell you for sure.
Right, so we don't know, I guess I'm looking to defend our inspectional services a little bit. We don't know that they overlooked something the first time. We, so we shouldn't, perhaps shouldn't cast dispersions on that department. That's all. Thanks.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Mr. Patel, I have a couple more questions, if I may. Whose responsibility is it, in your opinion, whose responsibility is it to ensure that their building is built to code? The owner or the town?
It is my responsibility. And whatever I have submitted in the original plan, and that's how we built it, and if it's alteration comes or editing comes, that is on and beyond my control that needs to be done. As much as railing, if I speak about what I have submitted and what we have drawn, Mr. Steve came up with adding more to the railing, another rail on top of, which was never submitted in design.
Okay, and to the best of your knowledge, do you believe that the designs you submitted, and who were they approved by, first of all? Who were those designs approved by?
What do you mean?
You said you submitted designs to the town. Who?
To the building department.
So the building inspector approved those?
Yes.
They didn't go to the zoning board of appeals? They didn't go to the planning board?
This is the building permit, and building permit has been approved without the ADA bathroom. Now I have an ADA bathroom.
Okay, so...
Which I built it originally.
So the, so thank you for clarifying who approved it. And so then you built exactly the building that was according to your plans. And what date was that finished on?
I'm sorry?
What date was that finished on, the building according to your plans?
It's a different occasion, different modification.
I didn't ask that. You said you built a building according to a plan. And I asked you when that building was complete so that the building inspector could come in and look at the plan that you allege that he approved. What date did that happen, please, sir? You finished the building and he came in and then said you had to change something. Could you give me that date, please?
Probably about two weeks ago, we had the first inspection.
And there were no modifications of your original design up until two weeks ago?
No. So each time, it's a different timing.
Okay, so just, thank you for saying no. Could you explain to me the original submission and then what your first change in submission was? And who asked you to do that? And who approved it and the date that it was approved, please?
I did not understand your question.
Okay, let me walk through it. I'll walk back. You designed a building...
Correct.
...to sell alcohol and perhaps have an apartment above, correct? And you submitted that plan to the building inspector to modify the structure that was there?
Correct.
Okay, and it was approved according to you?
That is correct.
Okay. And what I want to know from you, sir, is when that building that you had planned and submitted and was approved, when that building was complete?
The, in the process of...
I didn't ask you that, sir. I asked you when it was complete. It was never complete? That was never completed the way you planned it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so let's move on. At some point during the process, from whenever you submitted that plan, when did you submit that plan, by the way? What date?
I do not have the exact date.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, do you have that date?
No, I do not. I would expect that the applicant might be prepared. I'm sorry if I should have. I apologize to the chair. So at some date somewhere in the past, you submitted a plan, correct?
Correct.
And it was approved by the building inspector according to you, correct? Okay, and then you, at some point, you just told me that you had modifications. What, can you tell me the first date someone asked you for a modification and who it was and what that modification was?
I did not ask them for modification.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask that. I said, "Who asked you to modify the plan?"
Steve Solari.
At what date?
Back in January.
Back in January. And when did you submit the plan again? I forgot. Oh, you don't remember either, do you?
I don't know, but it's about a couple of years ago.
And so you had a couple of years to build a building exactly to the specifications that was improved, approved, and you did not do that. Could I ask you why?
Because we had, before then, when I started building it, we'd gone through another problems while we were building it. And the construction was stopped.
Okay, and was that, was that the fault of the town of Bridgewater or your own?
No, it was my contractor's fault.
Okay, so far I haven't heard you take responsibility for any question yet, but maybe that's just me. All right, so in sometime early this year was the first time that Mr. Solari asked you to change your plan that had been approved for many, many years. I remember Mr. Rivers was the president of the council, and he's been in Maryland for five years, I think, by now. And at that point, you had done something to the building or nothing to the building?
It was, entire building was up at that point.
And it was built to the specifications of your...
Correct.
All right, so why was it so hard to answer when the building was built to the specifications of your first?
I did not, that's why I told you. I didn't understood what you were asking me.
Oh, okay. So you built a building in January of this year. You finished it. And it was the exact specifications that you had submitted to the building department five years ago or whenever it was? Okay, and we can check that out. Okay. And then the building inspector came in and then asked you to do something. And I'm not going to ask about that. How many times has the building inspector been in your building to ask you to change something? Since January, when you built it according to yourself, to the specifications that you had put in to the building department that according to yourself were approved?
The first that he asked me for January is to put a sprinkler system that we never, ever submitted. And that building required, did not require building, I mean, the sprinkler system, fire system, which we had to put it in. It took me four and a half months to finish that.
Okay, and why was it your belief when you first submitted the plans that the building did not require a sprinkler system?
Anything below 7,500 square feet, it does not require a sprinkler system. We submitted that plan to the building department and building department approved that plan.
So it would be your contention that the building inspector is asking you to do something above and beyond code?
No, not above and beyond code. This is something that I never planned in my work. Neither I have.
I didn't ask what you planned, sir. I said, you just told me the code was 7,500 or 750, whatever the number was you just gave me, that that was, it was black-letter law that in fact you did not have to have a sprinkler system. And yet you built the building according to the specifications that you submitted to the building inspector, correct?
Correct.
And it was done in January of this year, according to those specifications. And then all of a sudden, the building inspector came in and said, "Oh, by the way, you need a sprinkler system." So you're telling me you know the law, so you're telling me the building inspector does not know the law, correct?
I did not say that. I say, my architecture told me that if you build 7,500 square feet total area, then you do not have to put the sprinkler system. So I understood that, and in that same way, I asked him to do it, so I do not have to put the sprinkler system.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, may I interject for a moment just on this, if I may? What, when the inspector said that you now had to add this to that structure, what was the reasoning?
He told me now, it, that, I don't know about which law or whatever, but he told me that without that, it will not pass this building and you will not get an occupancy permit. At that point, I started looking the fire company or sprinkler company. Same thing with the fire department. When I spoke to the fire department, and they also told me that if you do not want to put the system, you can appeal that decision, but you have to have sprinklers.
And this wasn't in the original plans?
No, no, sir.
I'm all set for right now.
Question on that. Because I've been here ever since Bill Rivers left. The original plan's called for what space above the store?
Approximately 2,600 square feet.
What type of space above the store?
Residential.
I recall it being office space above the store originally, and then it was revised to be residential. Maybe I'm incorrect. That could affect the sprinkler issue. So if the building was complete in January, did that include the ramp in front of the building?
No, sir.
Then the building was not complete in January? Correct?
The, the structure was up in January.
But it wasn't a building that could pass inspection in January? And so the sprinkler system wasn't the only thing missing from the building?
No, at that point.
When did the railing go up?
Railing go up first week of September.
And did the building inspector, was he delayed inspecting?
I'll take it back. The railing gone up August 2nd week. August 2nd week, we put the railing.
I saw the railing go up a week ago, right?
I have in ways, sir, and I did put it in myself.
I know, but you hadn't poured the steps and the railing wasn't there. I saw the railing appear on a Saturday, a week ago, a week, Saturday. Right, so after the railing went up, did you ask the building inspector to inspect the railing?
That is correct. That is correct.
And did he at that point, if it's the second week in August, say it had to be changed?
Correct.
And so you still had three weeks of work, right?
And then I changed it, according to his requirements. Then he come back again and he said, no, we need to put another additional, which is not also in the plan.
The railing wasn't in the three days' worth of work, was it, that you described? Or it wasn't in the work that you described on August 7th? Right? It took over a month to get the railing in, when on August 7th, you told us you had three days' worth of work. That's all.
Ms. Loesch?
Through you to the town manager, do we have a timeline of when all these things happened from the town's perspective and from the building inspector's perspective?
We do. Logs are kept in the building office.
Do we have them?
I don't have them with me.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. So here we are, and I do remember coming on board in April of 2015 when there was a proposal for a hearing at that time to find out what was going on with the building. So here we are, three, almost three and a half years later, and, you know, we're still trying to figure this all out. I do think that you have made a lot of progress since our last meeting. A lot of progress. Although you did make it very clear to us at that time that within three or four days, this is back in August 7th, that within three or four days you would be open. So to me, it sounded like, you know, you had your inspections lined up, you were ready to go, the, you know, certainly by August 15th, you know, I'd see customers coming in and out, and the weeks went on and they weren't. And now you tell us that the inspections didn't go quite as well because you were always told to do something else, do something else, that you didn't think would happen. So, you know, so here we are, I mean, what is your best guesstimate that you will be able to open to the public? Where's your best guess?
Whatever this, Mr. Steve has asked us in the last visit, we have addressed every single thing. And he is scheduled to come out tomorrow at 10 o'clock. At this point, I'm also thinking they're scrutinizing us on a very little minor thing, which is fine. We have addressed every single thing. And if I get a permit tomorrow, I did have since last week, every single company account opened up. They're holding the truck because of the copy of the license, and I have rescheduled two times to deliver. And I have told them, and I will bring that truck tomorrow if I get the copy of the license tomorrow. I keep delaying them and delaying them.
Do you think that the things that he wanted fixed at the last inspection?
It has been done.
They have been done. So any, he's either gonna not like that they've been done to his liking, or he's gonna find something else. That would hold up, that would hold up.
Can I just object to Mr. Gallagher's characterization? I apologize, Mr. Gallagher. It's not whether something is done to the building inspector's liking, it's whether it's done by the law.
I understand that, but I mean, the building is...
You said liking, and I just...
That's what I said.
It's not his liking.
You called him a liar. I don't think he's lied to us either.
That's okay.
But I mean, as long as the building inspector thinks that what he asked to be done before is done to his liking, to the law, and what he's supposed to do, then, and doesn't find anything else, then you should be fine. You're not expecting to see anything else.
Within two, maximum two days, the store will be filled.
Okay.
Computers up, gondolas up, everything is up. Cooler is running right now. Everything is running.
Mr. Colomotus?
I'm through you to the town attorney, Mr. Rollins. Would it, would it be possible for us to?
Please welcome.
Please. Make the revocation or approval of the license contingent on the building inspector's satisfaction tomorrow?
You could just continue the hearing and have it scheduled.
But then we'd need to, you know, schedule a...
You could continue it without closing the public hearing, hear more from, absolutely, that anyone can be summoned into this hearing. I mean,
Right.
the applicant could have brought witnesses.
But we would need to meet again. We couldn't have some automatic, you know, contingent. Okay, thank you.
Here's what I think. Living four houses away, having yet to be a counselor when I first saw you come into the building over Cable Studios where we used to have meetings. I think certainly if you were under the employ of anybody in a traditional position, you'd be fired. I think I, as a consumer, watching what's transpired or not transpired, I would have no faith in your business serving me as a potential customer. I think there's been lots of words and very little action. There's been repeated attempts to push out dates. I think what you just said today holds no weight whatsoever. Sadly. I don't like looking at an empty building. I don't like having an empty business. I don't like not being able to go to a store and enjoy commerce within this town. I don't feel at all that you would run this facility or this company, this organization, this business in any way that I would see fit. I mean, if we're at this point over and over again with you and your perceived lack of ability to manage the business even being built, I can't imagine how you're gonna do under the lines of the law when it comes to serving alcohol and not serving alcohol to minors and not serving alcohol in ways that are illegal in other ways. I just don't have any faith in you as a businessman doing the right thing in the right timeline. If anybody else says it, that's clearly how I'm gonna vote if we go there. Go right ahead.
I own first store in 2000 in North Dartmouth, and I still currently own. As of today, not a single violation. Twenty years profitable store, second location I opened in, back in 2011 in New Bedford. Not a single violation, and it's running very successfully. My business is to, or what I know is to run the business, construction, and things gone upside down in this. I came out of pocket 1.2 million dollars so far, not 1, 2 dollar or 200 dollar. The progress is there. All my saving, all my life is in there now. If I had to not succeed or if I had no aim to do that, or not to serve the public needs, or not to utilize that license, I would have not gone and purchased that license from the day one. It has, from the day when it started, from the town side, my side, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. The first time when I submitted the plan, it was Mr. White. Four times we have submitted plans and four times they lost the plan. It, I do not want it to bring anything. I do not want it to point out fingers. I have brought it to, right now, since last month and a half, I am really, really leaving, you know, anxiety, nervousness. 1.2 million is not a small amount.
Thank you.
I feel like investing money in a Bridgewater, I made a crime.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Mr. Patel. You had told me you submitted plans and they were approved, and you built the plans to specification in January of this year. This is the first time I heard about four plans. Could you tell me about the other three plans?
The first plan...
Could you tell me the dates and when they were submitted and when they were lost?
I do not have dates handy with me.
Okay.
But first time, Mr. White was the building inspector and I submitted the plan. They lost it. Hey, where is our plan? Where we are standing? Where is our building permit? Could you resubmit it? I can't find that paper. It was four times we had to resubmit.
So when you say you submitted plans, you meant your fourth time you submitted is the one you built to in January, is that correct?
Before we get the permit, we had to submit the plans four times.
Right, and so the fourth submission of the plans
Correct.
is the one that you built to in January?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Souza.
Clarify something. All four plans that you gave to the building official, it was the identical plan, correct?
Exactly identical.
It wasn't given four different plans?
No.
Identical?
Plan, because they lost it, I give another one. Because they lost it, I give another one.
You can't give dates to those four lost plans and four resubmissions?
I'm sorry?
You don't know those dates?
No, I do not. That's a while back, sir.
Did you...
Can we ask what year?
I was just gonna ask if you could give a, when this occurred, over what period of time perhaps, are you saying this occurred?
Possibly two and a half year ago. Two years ago. I do not have exact dates.
Two to two and a half years ago, approximately. Over what period of time from submission one to submission four?
I believe it went on from the March, April, May, June, and then finally we got permit, I believe in the August of 2016 or 17.
No.
I'm not sure.
It was before that. Your first warning from us was in 2015. So you got your plans prior to that.
No, no, the warning from this department while I was still going through the planning board and getting approved of the building and the new building specifications, so I was moving along at that time.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Mr. Patel, you just said that you went to the planning board and were getting approval from the planning board. I asked you specifically about that earlier when I was asking you questions, and you said you didn't appear in front of the planning board at all. So now I'm confused. Could you clear that up for me?
We have gone through zoning board of appeals. We have gone through planning board of appeals. And I...
Do you not recall me asking you those questions earlier?
No, I didn't understand.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, what did you have to do with the zoning board of appeals then? Because this was gonna be a whole nother line of questions I wanted to get into. Why did you have to appear there? What were you asking for and what was their decision?
For the multiple use of the building.
What does that mean?
Residential and commercial use of the one building.
And that was in what you submitted to
Zoning.
Mr. White four times?
No.
She finally held on to it?
No, after all those approval, building plan, that this is the building that we are going to build, I submitted four times.
So you went to the zoning board before you submitted plans to the building department?
I went through the zoning, planning, before even I bring that old building down. I went through all the process.
So you went to the zoning board first and said, this is what I want to do, and the planning board, this is what I want to do?
Correct.
And then when the zoning board said yes and the planning board said yes, at that point, you submitted to the building inspector who lost it and submitted, and he lost it, and he submitted and he lost it, and then you submitted and he finally held on to it, correct?
Which is, he was in the different office working. One day we were meeting in the fire department, one day we were working in the DPW department.
Yeah, yeah, no, I remember that. I'm just trying to get the timeline down because I thought I'd asked you about zoning board and planning board, and you had said, no, you didn't meet with them. But they approved, they approved all those first plans that you would submit.
We, I had to go through multiple times before zoning approves and planning board approves.
Right, but what I'm asking you is, the ones that you built to, that you said was built to exactly according to the specifications that you submitted to the building inspector several years ago, we won't quibble about the dates, were the exact ones that were approved by the zoning board and the planning board and the building inspector? Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
No move.
Most people have no questions or anything.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made to close the hearing, seconded by Mr. Colomotus. I suppose we should have...
That's it.
We move to...
Discussion?
Oh, yeah, I think...
Mr. Fitzgibbons followed by Mr. Colomotus.
I just want to close this part so we can get on to whether or not we're gonna do a revocation or any other particular thing. I think everyone's questions...
Okay, so if at this point... If someone wants to ask more questions, they should speak now.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, no. That's why I said I'll make a motion unless people have questions, and I didn't see...
If we are moving on from this, it's going to be up to Mr. Patel for the closing statement. Are we ready to offer him the space, the podium for a closing statement? Do you have something else to say, Mr. Souza?
Because of the timeframe, a building permit is good for two years and it can be extended by the building official. If the building code should change, okay, and now it's beyond the two years, then they can require you to do, build it up to the code of today. You understand? So like, the handrail, for an example, I'm gonna quote. He said a handrail and he built it according to code, and then when they came to inspect it, they said, no, it's different. Now you see where the two years comes in and the change of the code and the requirement by the building official. He was in his rights to do that. But it causes a delay, there's no question about it. But it brought Mr. Patel's handicap accessible ramp right up to code as of today because it may have changed after that two-year period of time.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I will add, actually, about your tying up of your personal expense in 1.2 million or whatever you had stated. I would, I would have thought that you'd be a little bit more communicative and more close contact with the town manager and some of the officials within this immensely long period of time. Because I know we had waited here looking and checking our mailbox. We get letters that bounced back from you, waiting for phone calls, just however many months ago where I sat as a councilman. Just let us know if you're not gonna make the March or the May date. March or May. It just blew by. You know, I'm not just amazed to be at that level of carrying that kind of risk, monetary risk, business risk, that you would allow that timeframe to move on or not move on for that matter without that level of communication that we deserve. And it shocks me more than knowing that you have that expense. It doesn't warrant an answer. It's just my statement. Do we have more things to talk about, or shall we let him move forward with the closing statement?
I'm sticking to the letter of the law here.
Well, I think we need to have the closing statement, so...
So, questions for the licenses are done. You've made a motion to...
No, I'm...
You withdrew the motion, okay.
So now is your opportunity for your closing statement, sir.
So finally, I have put so much time, so much effort, so much money in this project from the day one. If I did, if I wanted to hold on to something, I would have not just the license. I would have bought something else. This is what I planned quickly, fairly, six months I will be done with. Apparently, very, every step of the way, it was a curb for me. Every time it was a curb for me. I don't know, it was my luck. But I refused to come down to knee and, you know, I continued on, continued on. It's wrong contractor or wrong guy. I trusted them. I gave them more advanced money than I had to, whatever it took. I brought this location or building to the code, to the requirement, to getting inspected by tomorrow 10 o'clock, and I hope you guys do the right thing.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion to close the hearing?
I would love one.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded.
What was the motion made for?
I'm sorry?
Did you repeat the motion?
The motion is to close the hearing.
Thank you.
Made and seconded. Any discussion about closing it? I don't think we're gonna have any of that, so we are closing that section of the hearing. Number seven. You don't have to be at the podium anymore. Thank you, Mr. Patel. Counsel may find now that the license violated or permitted a violation of...
I didn't hear a vote on closing the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. So those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Thank you, counsel. So this counsel, the CIL, may find that the license violated or permitted a violation of the license or of Massachusetts law or may find... or may find no violation occurred. That's what we're thinking of right now. That's what we're gonna want.
So I'd make a motion that we find a violation has occurred?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. We have discussion on that?
I think, you know, it's clear in the letter that the town manager sends in the next, almost the next to last paragraph, citing A-B-C-C decision in Ray Atara LLC, DBA Atara Bistro, that a licensee cannot cease operations, sit silent and avoid contact with the local board without facing the real peril of the cancellation of its license. Essentially, the operations have been ceased for years and the licensee has sat silent and avoided contact, as you pointed out, Mr. President, with the local board. And therefore, it is a real peril of cancellation of its license.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, you seconded?
I did.
Mr. Wood?
I did, yeah. I think that it's been idle for five years, which is exactly right. I know there have been many instances to try to reach out to the owner. And I've personally tried to reach out to, there was many communications from the town hall to the owner. At one point, the council had asked the owner to come in and give a monthly update and those stopped as well. Shame on us for, you know, not pointing that out earlier. So in terms of a business being idle, the business was bought with bottles and cash register behind a locked door and the locked door stayed locked and the bottles disappeared. And the store was closed for five years now. So I think that's a, that's an idle business.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
I think that there was a time that we should have probably revoked the license. There was a time for us to do that. Not that we're gonna revoke it, but we're citing that he violated one of the, for ceasing operations and so forth. But I think there was a time that we should have put the hammer down on this business, but we didn't. And I think we can all see, he's very close. He's there. He's pretty much there. And I know that he's been before us a lot of times in the past three and a half years. But he's there. We all drive by there, we can see that he's almost there. To do anything, to interfere with that, I think would not be appropriate. And believe me, this town is not being deprived of the opportunity to buy alcohol if they want it. And I think that there has been no one from the public has come forward to support any revocation of the license during these hearings that we've had. It's been us. So I don't want to see the license be revoked. Has he made a violation of the use of his license? I don't, I don't know. Because I guess through you, Mr. President, to the town council, the reference of cannot cease operation, sit silent and avoid contact. I think those are three different things. In my opinion, he's probably done one of those. He ceased operations, but he has not sat idle.
I don't, I didn't draft that, so I-
I don't think he's sat idle or he hasn't avoided contact with us.
I think as the local licensing authority, so long as you make a legal determination of abandonment or not utilizing the license, I don't think, I don't think those are terms of art. I think those are just terms that are put in the letter. Again, I didn't draft it, so I don't exactly know why they were put in there. But I think you have pretty good flexibility in terms of making that determination. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't hang that, hang a hat on that.
I do see that there's, there's the cease operation. I see that. Because he hasn't been open for three plus years. But we've peppered him for the past three and a half years at least. I don't know if anything happened before I came on board. But we have peppered him for the past three and a half years, what's happening? And he's come before us and he's had some tough questions and he, he's very close now. So that's just my take on that. I think that, you know, I don't know.
Mr. President, in light of Mr. Gallagher's comments, could I make a motion to reconsider closing the hearing? Is that possible? Motion to reconsider?
It was successful, so-
Yeah. I'd make a motion to reconsider closing the hearing.
Reopen it?
No, no. Yeah, reopen the hearing or-
Essentially, yeah.
I mean, essentially, I'm making a motion to reconsider my motion to close the hearing, which was successful, so I can make that motion. And I have a second? So here's my thing. If, so, hey, had a second? Sorry, we gotta vote on that.
Right.
Oh, no, wait.
We can discuss.
My bad, sorry.
Motion seconded, let's discuss this.
All right, so here's my thing. If, it sounds like Mr. Gallagher doesn't want to take action tonight. If in fact, we don't take action tonight, I want the hearing still open back here at our next meeting. That's, that's my reason for making that motion. Because Mr. Gallagher has all the faith in the world in Mr. Patel. And Mr. Patel, you better thank him if you get open in two weeks. Because if you don't, I'm sure he's not gonna have any more faith in you. So I'd like to reconsider that, keep the hearing open so that we can not have all the notice and all that other stuff going on.
Okay, Mr. Colomodos.
I agree with Mr. Fitzgibbons completely. I would add that two weeks from now, in my mind, is a drop dead date. There's like no more excuses, no more, nothing, so.
Mrs. Lowish?
I feel like that's what we did in August 7th, as we did in March, as we did in January, as we did in December, as we did in April of 2016 and whatever the other dates that are that we're throwing about, because it hasn't been five years since 2014. It's been four. So let's stop making it seem like this has been closed for 17 years. It has not. However, we have been having this conversation for years. So I disagree. We were pretty clear and pretty straightforward at our last meeting on the 7th. And while we have had, it seems like we have issues from the building inspector's office, from what we heard from Mr. Patel's perspective, we have no dates. We don't have the building inspector here to speak to what changed. And we're creating things from our own memory, which I know from all of the perspectives are not very good. So I don't see the point of continuing until the 11th. We should, or today's the 11th. Whatever the next meeting is, we should just make a decision because this has been dragged on for so long and if that's the urgency, we should just get it done.
Mr. Colomodos?
Through you, town manager, are there other package store licenses available? Is this-
Package store licenses, there are not any available. In fact, Bridgewater has one package store license that was created by special legislation. But, so we have more than, one more than our allotment. So we don't have any available.
Mr. George?
So I'm, I'm gonna make a broad statement then specific. So my broad statement is I'm thoroughly disappointed we're at this point. I think, and I'm not gonna speak for everyone in the council, but I think overall the sentiment is we're very disappointed we've gotten to this point. I very much appreciate what you've told us that you've committed to. But I also have to say that, at least as I've been on the board, the only time you've ever come in here is when we made you come in here. I don't really think that bodes well for the amount of time and effort and money that you've put into this project, well knowing that we set specific expectations on when we wanted this done. So this is what I would agree to. We continue the hearing. We also have the building inspector come with specifics on the entire project. Because I will tell you, Mr. Patel, if it's not open, I will vote to rescind. And I also will say this, if, I really don't want to sit here and listen to you blame everyone else and you take no responsibility for any of this. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, fortunately for me, I was not here during the duration of the period of years that I now understand that there have been questions raised and issues and delays and just a lot of frustration. I share in that frustration just after having experienced these past two meetings to discuss the possible revocation of the license. I can't get myself off of one thought though. And I think that it's simply this, that we're left with the possibility of either in literally a matter of perhaps three days or something of that sort, if in fact the inspection is successful tomorrow morning and a certificate of occupancy issues, we're left with the prospect of either having an open business or perhaps having a vacant storefront for the next six months or year or whatever it might be. I agree with the council members who have expressed, you know, their frustration, who have seriously, you know, doubted the faith that frankly, that they have put in you, Mr. Patel, in the past. I do hearken back to the comments that were made earlier as to just the fact that you do seem to be right on the precipice. It seems that there is only a matter of a few days. And my, my sense is that I would like to see that opportunity given a chance. But I would absolutely be completely opposed to any further continuance. I have to believe that you've had more than ample opportunity, notwithstanding the many setbacks that you've experienced. But I just think that it's, it has to be an absolute ultimatum.
Mr. Gallagher?
Through you to the town manager, Mr. President, or the town attorney, if we see that he has made, has violated, as Councilor Fitzgibbon said, what are our options? We don't have to revocate it, right? There are other penalties we could impose and what would those, what could those be?
So you, you can modify the license in any way you deem fit. You can, you would really be in this circumstance, you'd be either, I would probably have you revoke and/or cancel because I don't know that it's ever actually been exercised. But really, you have a litany of options. I mean, modify, you could do nothing, you could issue a warning, you could revoke, you could revoke and/or cancel. So it's pretty open.
Ignore, issue a warning, modify the license?
I think issue a warning.
Can I get a point of order here? The discussion is on the motion to reopen the hearing, not what we can do after if we choose to do anything. So I'd like the discussion to stay on that.
Sorry, Mr. Wood.
This is on reopening the hearing. I'm, although earlier I said I was in favor of revoking, I am in favor of reopening the hearing. Because these are my expectations. At 10:01 or thereabouts tomorrow morning, I'm expecting an email from the town manager that came from the town inspector that says the inspection passed. And if it didn't pass, then I'd like to know exactly why. In terms of some of the things that we've heard tonight, this is really our third, maybe fourth time this year that we've given opportunity for continuance. And I agree, it's a lot closer than it was five weeks ago, but it's not open. And when there's discussion about the building inspector on the, on the handrail, we were told on August 7th that the handrail was a custom fabrication, that someone was gonna weld that handrail. So that person better have known what the ADA requirements were for that handrail and not depended upon the building inspector to come back into a finished product and say it's wrong. And that's been this case all along. So I'm willing to go, you know, another two weeks. But my, my decision in two weeks is predicated on what happens tomorrow. Not what happened last week or seven weeks ago or seven months ago or three years ago. Because we've heard a lot of stories. And now we're hearing that at 10:00 AM tomorrow morning, the building inspector's gonna be there, everything's finished and there's gonna be complete sign-off on the building. Even though when I drove past earlier last night, it still looked like there was an awful lot of work to be done. And maybe that was cosmetic and not, not building, you know, structure. But it still looked like there was an awful lot done. So, so I'm willing to support the continuance. But if, if by midday tomorrow I don't get an email that says that's signed off, my decision in two weeks will be to revoke this license.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'd just like to point out one thing for the benefit of my colleagues, that this is a motion to reconsider, so it needs two-thirds vote to pass. So we need six out of nine if we want to do it. If we don't, that's fine too.
Point of information? So if we do vote to reopen the hearing, within that timeframe, we can also decide to continue?
I'd make a motion to continue.
Okay.
And that was important.
Yeah, that would be my next motion.
That's all, that's all I wanted to know. Okay.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question.
More discussion on reopening or are we ready to move?
I actually think you have to first vote to reconsider and then you have to re-vote on the closing of the hearing and then you can vote on a continuance.
So first vote to reconsider.
Second. Well, that's already been seconded, right?
Yeah. So a vote to reconsider.
So, and we can do it-
Yeah, you've made a motion to reconsider.
So for two-thirds, do we have to do a voice vote?
This is a, yeah.
Is it? Okay.
Voice vote for-
If anyone doubts it, we-
To reconsider.
Voice vote now for, to reconsider. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against?
Nay. Asia.
Asia Lowish.
All right. I'll make, I'll make a motion, I'll withdraw my motion to close the hearing then. Because I made the motion, so I can withdraw it, correct?
Correct.
All right, then I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until our next regularly scheduled council meeting at 7:40 PM.
Does the second need to withdraw also?
I withdraw also.
Sorry.
You withdraw your second. He's made another motion. Would you like to second that? Seconded by Mr. Wood. Would you like to further discuss that? I think he kinda discussed it.
No, I just said, continue to our next regular council meeting at 7:40 PM.
Full agreement, no discussion, Mr. Wood?
Full discussion, full, full agreement. The only, the only other point I wanted to ask about and I forgot to was, maybe it's outside of this question, is whether the applicant needs to go before the planning board one more time? Because I heard today that that was, that was a fact.
Well, we'll find out if there's not an inspection done tomorrow at 10:00 AM.
That's true.
And any other discussion on this? Shall we, shall we, what was the date?
We need, we need a vote to continue at time or wanting-
Vote to continue to the next council, scheduled council meeting.
September 25th, I believe.
September 25th.
Okay, so now, voice vote. Have a continuance of this hearing until the next council meeting, which is September 25th. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against?
No.
That would be Ms. Lowish again.
Same address, same name as the last.
Yes, 90 Lucky Street.
It's a now or never, I might never get back.
Seriously.
We will.
So am I done with this? I can move on? Excellent. We can. Thank you. All right. Now we are at presentations, which there are none. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm getting the sense that I'll have a quick report tonight, although there has been a lot going on this summer. But I'll try to, try to curb it a little bit this evening. Just so the council is aware, we've got a couple of things upcoming on your agendas. But one of the ones I want to highlight, which will probably come to you for first reading September, excuse me, 25th, I'll be asking for appropriation of funds for a traffic engineer and planner to develop alternative safe downtown traffic patterns. All of this, as you probably are aware, relative to and pursuant to the downtown revitalization plan. So I'm asking somebody to come in and give us realistic options on revised traffic patterns. Also, I would like to have somebody look at Grove Street intersection, the Grove Street intersection with Bedford. And also, we have a couple of school traffic circulation issues that need some professional attention. So that among others, I'll be asking for some appropriation of funds to hire a traffic engineer to get us to the point where we have plans sufficient enough to get endorsed by the council and also sufficient enough to seek funding through either Department of Transportation or our, our TIP program through OCPC. Little bit of good news, the fire department received almost $140,000 in- Little bit of good news, the fire department received almost $140,000 in funds from the Assistance to Firefighters grant, and that covers the cost of two sets of Jaws of Life, updates our equipment, also provides physical exams for firefighters and also health and wellness training, which will be done in conjunction with a number of area towns. So we took the lead on this and quite proud of the fire department for securing those monies. The Bridge Street project is underway. As I've mentioned, this requires the closure of the bridge, so travelers are advised, obviously, to find alternate routes. We have placed our notice boards and signage in areas where we think they're most effective to notify people of the closure in detail. The work should take no more than three weeks, we're hoping about two weeks, to complete. So that is underway and so far, so good. I know on one of my first days of vacation, we had a breakdown of the chemical feed treatment system at the Carvers Pond Water Treatment Plant, and I'll preface this by saying I know that there were several councilors who were very concerned about the notification. The actual failure resulted in filtered but unchlorinated water being delivered into the distribution system. And normally, under these conditions, our pumps would automatically shut down, and in this case, they did not, which is what the real problem was due to a faulty switch. We have very strict protocols, we have very dedicated water staff who are licensed and know exactly what to do in these situations. We did all the testing that was required, notifications to DEP, and I can tell you, I actually reviewed the guidance, DEP, well, not just guidance, the DEP regulations, which are found in 310 CMR 22, and mostly to make sure that we did things right. I am very happy to say that we did do everything right under the unfortunate circumstances. The notifications that we sent out, we continue to send out, we'll have to send another notification in the billing, which comes out in a month or two. So we have done all that we are required to do under that notice, and I will tell you, it's a difficult concept, quite frankly, for me, because I've been through this before in another town, but you essentially have to follow the guidelines set out by DEP. If DEP says, "Don't notify people," you don't notify people. If they say, "Do notify people," you notify people pursuant exactly to exactly the language and the format that they ask you to notify people. So the good news is, there were no bacteria hits, which is the concern. We tested all over town, townwide, even though this particular issue only affected a piece of the town, but we tested townwide, there was no bacteria found in any of those testings. So that's good news and the problem has been fixed. We have a more long-term fix that we're going to obviously have to do, which will include the new plant that is being designed and about to break ground. So I'm happy to answer questions about that to the extent I know, but I do know that your next meeting will have the water department engineers in and you can ask very detailed questions of them, so they'll be happy to provide some information as well. Another issue, due to some abuses recently this year and to some extent last year of one of the parks in town, we will be developing a new approval process for overnight camping applications, specifically at Tidicat. We are planning on having applications actually signed off by both the police department and the fire department. The access road will be locked at all times. Doesn't mean that there's not pedestrian access, it just means that there's no truck or vehicle access unless there's an organized camping trip, in which case the fire department will open up the roads and allow vehicles in, pre-approved vehicles in, who are bringing campers or equipment and so forth. And obviously, there'll be reference to the rules of the park on the application, similar to what we do now. We'll also limit the overnight stays per person or per group. We'll try to limit the number of nights, probably enough to cover a long weekend, but what we're trying not to allow is continuous, summer-long stays in the park that are uncontrolled and unpermitted. So we are going to be sort of tightening up the rules around that. We have, no, I'm sorry, we have, as you know, the planning board has denied the special permit and site plan application for the proposed solar farm off of Auburn Street, and the applicant has appealed that, that's working its way through the legal system. Attorney Rollins has filed an answer to the complaint, arguing that the planning board certainly was acting within its rights to deny that application, and I think the parties are scheduled for status conference on September 24th, so we'll keep you posted on where that goes. I did inquire with the House and the Senate as to where our charter revisions are. They've cleared the House and are now awaiting Senate action. My understanding is that they're in third reading in the Senate, and the Senate Council's office is doing a final review prior to a vote there. So as anybody that's dealt with the legislature knows, that when you say, "Okay, so when?" will that be coming back to us? There's a lot of hemming and hawing and there's no exact time or date given, but we will keep calling to make sure that they understand our urgency and our concern about that. The Mitchell School Building Committees actually met last night, and that work is ongoing. The committee has eliminated a number of alternative sites, which we were required to look at according to MSBA rules, and so essentially now, the focus is on trying to fit the educational program into the property at 500 South Street. So that work is ongoing and it looks like we'll be on track there. Just wanted to give my monthly plug for volunteers. We've had great, some great new volunteers come through the process, and you've appointed four of them tonight, so I'm very happy with that. I think we have a few more, I know we have a few more coming up, but I do want to give a shout-out for anybody interested in serving on the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, the Water and Sewer Board, and the ZBA, among other opportunities, but anybody out there interested in those volunteer opportunities, they're all really fun and exciting. I'll keep saying that until people believe me, but it is a great opportunity to serve the town, and I think all those boards have great people on them now and people willing to sort of train. So don't feel afraid if you don't know a whole lot about any one of those particular areas. If you have an interest, I encourage people to come in, talk to me, or do a little research on the website and then come talk to me. I'm happy to have discussions. Just as an FYI, both Mrs. Williams and I will be attending the ICMA conference on the 25th, and for your meeting that evening, I'm planning on inviting a handful of department heads. We talked about this for actually probably a couple of years now, just trying to get the departments in so that you know who they are, you know what they do. And in this particular case, I want, certainly I think that the council needs to know a lot more about the upcoming sewer upgrade, the sewer plant upgrade, which is potentially a $30 to $40 million ordeal, and also the water plant upgrade and exactly what that'll do. So we'll have the engineers here for you to sort of spell that out. I've asked them to do pictures and really get into a little bit of detail so that the council's well aware of what some of those larger capital items are going to be. So that is what I have for this evening.
Questions for the town manager? I'm sorry, Mr. Wood?
I didn't see all the notices and I haven't asked you this before, sorry, but the bridge work, is that related to storm damage or something else?
That's a great question. Now, the bridge work is related to drainage that was on, I'll call it the east Bridgewater side of the bridge, even though that's still Bridgewater, drainage that was probably not correctly placed and installed when that bridge was redone probably 10 or 12 years ago, I don't know how long ago it was now, but it caused erosion of the roadway and the sidewalk areas so that embankment needs to be rebuilt and the drainage reconfigured so it's not eroding the bank.
Quick follow-up.
Yes.
So I and several others were here for that, so I think we may have had storm-related monies used for that in a contract, I don't know, to the contractor. Is it possible that the contractor did the job incorrectly and there's some reimbursement there?
We, I know that we have looked into that. We've done some initial work on trying to figure out who the contractor was, and we've done some, I know Ron's done some work trying to find the original plans. It is possible that we asked the contractor to put drainage in, in a place that it didn't show up on the plan, so we continue to look at that, but I'm not going to hold my breath on that one.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. George?
Through you to the town manager. Can you kind of expand? You went through the explanation on the water issue, the treatment issue, and you said there are specific...
Mr. George?
Yep, I got you.
Okay.
I'm not used to people telling me they can't hear me. That there's specific protocol, which I completely understand and appreciate, but you also, I think you alluded to the fact that there's notification of people, who to notify, who not to notify, per the DEP. Can you expand on exactly who can be notified when there's a situation?
I guess the best answer to that is there are three tiers of what I'll call notifications, depending on the severity of the issue. So in this particular case, because it's sort of, you know, an edifying case, the DEP, we reported to the DEP, that's who we report to, that's who the water department, the licensee, the individual licensee is responsible for notifying DEP. So it's not even, you know, a department head, it's not, you know, me, it's not, you know, anybody in my office. The individual licensee actually has to notify DEP of a test result or of an action that may violate our permit. And in this case, the failure, you know, equipment failure is one of those things that could potentially be a ding against our license. So the licensee contacts DEP directly, DEP says, "Okay, give me, you know, test results" because presumably tests were done immediately after finding out that what had happened. And so in this case, I'm not quite sure of the details between then and when we actually issued the notice, but the DEP says, "Okay, we'll tell you, at that point, we'll tell you exactly what to do and what tier this is and what the notification requirements are." So that we have to follow. I have actually seen situations where, and been involved actually, in situations where unilaterally the town has issued notices without DEP approval to the town and with all, you know, absolutely with all good intent, but the DEP actually has cited the town for issuing a notification improperly. So I think from their perspective, they're looking to make sure that any notification is appropriate under the particular circumstances and is not going to cause undue concern or undue fear in the eyes of the public that the water is serving. So the issue that I have, quite frankly, is not, has nothing to do with how we went about our DEP notifications and how DEP interacted with our staff. I think that was all according, by the book, basically, and according to protocol, at least that I'm used to and that I've read. My issue is much more that, you know, as soon as we had an equipment breakdown, I should have known that, and that's more internal communication that we need to fix. That's not external communication or notification that we need to fix. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, Counselor George.
Well, it answers a little bit of it. It does bring to light the fact that, at least in my opinion, there was a failure of communication to your office on something that was a specific event that potentially could have been detrimental to the public, you know, thankfully it wasn't. I don't gather by what you're saying that if the licensee were to notify the town manager that would be a violation of DEP protocol, is that safe to say?
Correct.
Okay. So would it also be safe to say that it would not be against DEP protocol that if town officials were notified with the caveat that then not to communicate it to the public? Would that be safe to say that, I don't think would be cited by the DEP on violating any protocol? Would that be?
That would, I obviously don't want to speak for DEP, but I don't imagine that they would have an issue with that, but that's exactly the kind of question that our water engineers, you know, be much better equipped to answer than I would.
Okay.
But I do think you're correct.
And so I guess where, you probably know where I'm going with this because you were CC'd on the emails, I have a really, really, really big issue with someone in the town notifying me of an announcement of an issue that was put on our website. So I think you've already alluded to the fact that there was a breakdown in communication. I will also say that this isn't the first time that we've had other things that have been brought to at least my attention that I would expect you and your office to know about and to notify us ahead of time. I do look forward to the water department coming here because I'll be asking them specifically the same questions on why they did not, at the bare minimum, notify your office on Sunday night, if not Monday, of what was going on, and the way it was communicated to me was you guys finding out 15 minutes before the announcement of the water department that you were brought into the fold on what happened on Sunday. So I look forward to that discussion as well. Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few months back, we approved a large package of expenditures for you through the stabilization fund, capital, for capital reason. I believe that one of them might have been a piece of equipment for the highway department as far as, I think it was either a street sweeper or a brush truck or something like that. I've had a few complaints, and I think we all were CC'd on an email recently of a lot of overgrown brush on some of the sidewalks in various parts of the town, particularly up by 104 and down here in front of the old mobile station that's closed. Is there any progress we can make to kind of clean this up a little bit, or are they going around different areas that just haven't gotten to those areas yet? And do they have the equipment to get rid of some of this overgrown brush that seems to be interfering in the right-of-way and the walkable town that some of the people see these sidewalks and say, "I think I'll go for a walk," but they have to dodge some over, a lot of overgrown brush?
I can find out. I know the machine, which is also the sidewalk plow or the sidewalk blower, I know that that was down for some of the summer, but they do have a root that they try to take care of, and I'll see where, specifically where 104 stands.
And at the McElwain School, I just want to clarify that the town is not using any of its resources there to cut the grass at that building, is that correct?
That's, we obviously used to do it probably once a year, twice a year. We don't do that any longer, though you're correct.
That's it.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
In the department heads that are coming at the next meeting, I'd strongly suggest that the building department head come.
Uh, the building department head will absolutely be here and will give you any amount of information that you require.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Colombo.
Um, Mr. Dunn, you and I discussed a internal striping of parking lots. And I'm just speaking specifically of the entrance from Summer Street into the Walmart, the Walgreens parking lot and that, the line that's between the egress and ingress is gone, not there. So I'm just wondering what means we have to ensure that property owners do that internal striping.
Um, I don't know legally what we have, but I do know that we made, placed a call to them probably a month and a half or two months ago. And they acknowledged that that was something they needed to do. So I'll follow up myself on that one.
Thank you.
But I, it, it would, you know, it's something that I'll work with our Community and Economic Development Director on because I'm not sure that our planning board regs, rules and regs, or any decision that we issue through the ZBA actually has that ongoing requirement. And they probably should.
I, yeah. Hard to imagine that they wouldn't. I mean, that you can stripe something and let it fade away and never be there again. But yes, if you could look into that, it'd be great. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to Item J, discussions. I will turn that over to Mr. George.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, councils that have been on here are a lot wronger than I, but I don't recall ever having both Senator Pacheco and Representative D'Amelia at a council meeting specifically for them to not only be here for us to be able to ask them questions on what's going on, you know, on Beacon Hill and things of that nature, but also inviting the public to come in and be able to, you know, voice concerns and, and ask questions of, you know, our, our representation. So my, my thought process is on the meeting for November 13th is to invite both President, excuse me, Senator Pacheco and Representative D'Amelia here. Send out notification to the public of an invite. I think we talked about maybe having it before the council meeting. We can work the logistics on that. But, you know, we either here or out in the community, and the other part too, I, let me take a step back. I'd also invite all the department heads and be able to, you know, talk to the two people that are going to be very influential in helping us gain additional resources that we woefully need, as well as the public being able to address the concerns, as I was going to say, that we hear either at a meeting or we hear out in the public and to get their feedback, not only in what is going on, but maybe to get them to commit to some things that we can expect them to deliver on in Bridgewater. I know that they come to the, the state of the town, but that's specifically for the council president and the town manager. They, you know, they don't have, nor should they, I don't think, have an opportunity to speak or, or have questions asked. So I just wanted to, I want to put that as, as my idea for consideration of the council and to see if, if it's, if it's supported. Great if not, just to explain my idea on this.
Discussions. Mr. Gallagher?
Idea to invite them.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I, I, I like the idea. I'd maybe separate department heads from our state representatives and almost, as you said it, I was thinking about, why couldn't we have an open house one night here for department heads, for people to come in? You know, I'm just thinking out loud.
Actually, what I was thinking, Tim, is not for us to ask the department heads questions, but for the department heads to tell Senator Pacheco and Representative-
Oh, oh, oh. I, I thought you meant for the public to interact-
No. And the reason I say that too is I sat on my first public safety meeting, and I'm going to talk about that. My eye, my head was going to explode.
Right.
Just of all of the need that we have. And that's great for us to hear, but it also I think would be very good for them to hear as well. So no, I, I'm not saying that the public-
No, I misunderstood what you said. Sorry.
Right.
No, I, I think, you know, it's up to them to accept and understand the ground rules, but I think it's a great idea to invite them.
It's an invitation, you know, from there. Sorry, I apologize if I was confusing.
Anybody else?
Although I do like my open house idea, too.
Excellent idea, excellent idea.
I'll put on, on discussion next time.
In the, in the summer when I'm on vacation.
And the schedule for when we have the, is it once a year or twice a year with the public?
This doesn't even have to be necessarily a meeting of the general public. It could just be invite the senator and the representative in before a meeting to meet people from the town. I mean, it doesn't have to be a general meeting. I think it would be great either way, but-
Would, I'm sorry, whatever mechanism will work best.
Yeah.
I'm, you know-
So I, can I make a, kind of in the form of a motion?
Sure.
I'd make a motion that the President draft a letter to the Senator and the state rep to come at November 13th or another date if that's inconvenient for them, because it is only two months out and they do schedule things in advance. But just, you know, and here's the general concept of what we want to do, which is what you just outlined.
Yeah, as long as they came on, they come on the same day.
Yeah.
We, they come on the same day and we also give enough notice to people that they know that they're coming.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I mean, work with the council clerk to schedule-
And I, I picked Nov- I picked November 13th, just because I wanted to give them two months out, but-
Yeah. And both of them have a hard fought election campaign.
Yeah. And, and trying, and trying to stay away from the holidays as best I can as well. So, okay. I mean, yeah, I-
Yeah, let's ask for November 13th, but you know, if, for whatever reason, this-
Is that some kind of a motion to ask the President to draft a, an invitation?
I think, I think Anne got it and she'll probably draft it for you.
I'll sign it, Anne.
I actually make a motion to make the President do it because he's got to do something. No, I'm kidding.
[laughing]
Yeah. I mean, is there, I guess, everyone in agreement?
There's a second to Tim's motion.
Second, I'll second.
Made by Mr. Fitzgibbons, seconded by Mr. Gallagher, discussion on the idea of having this occur. I think everybody is silently saying it's awesome.
Okay.
Okay, my, my night's made.
Excellent.
Should we have a vote?
Let's have a vote. Those in favor of drafting a letter with an invitation for November 13th for the Senator and State Rep to come in or a date that fits them for a nice discussion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those against? Hey, that's what we're doing. I'd like to note that it wasn't within that to have the President specifically write it, but I will do so for your benefit, Mr. George.
Like really sign it. Don't have her-
I will handwrite it. Okay. But I'll use the Palmer method as well. I can't, I'm a lefty. Committee reports. Anyone? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Uh, I'll make one from the Public Safety Commission Committee. As Mr. George alluded to, we had a meeting the other day. I'm, I'm the chair and Mr. George and Mr. Chaser are members. And it's our goal to come up with a, a document to share with the council and with the public generally about not necessarily what we can afford in public safety, but what we need in public safety. And we took a look at three departments particularly, obviously police and fire, but also highway because the roads we drive on, if the roads are unpassable for police and fire personnel, then that's important. Just very high level is, and I don't want to scare anybody at this point in time, but you know, Mr. George said it's eye-opening. It is. Police, you know, given a town of our size and, and the types of incidents that happen, you know, their primary need right now is, would be additional personnel to the extent we can afford it. Fire would be capital, whether it be a new station to replace the 150-year-old one we have there or whatever it is. And, you know, replacing vehicles as they age out of the fleet. And the Highway Department would be, I wrote down everything. More men, better equipment, more people, better equipment. And, you know, shoring up some roads and whatnot. So we have our work cut out for us, the town managers pulling together a document that the committee approved with those departments so that we can get together and have a more in-depth conversation about the needs and, you know, potential costs. We're not the Budget and Finance Committee. We're not deciding whether we're going to spend the money. We just want to know and inform the council and the public what's out there and, you know, what, what's in front of us as far as those issues go. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Other reports? Mr. Slosh?
Um, the Rules and Procedures Committee met a few weeks back. And actually, we have something coming up that we're, I'm hoping that we can hold back for some additional amendments when we get to-
LD.
LD. Um, we got some additional feedback, even though it's been with us for almost about a year. We hope one more meeting will finish it up and get it back to you. Strategic Planning also met in the past month and we're hoping to get some additional information about what is happening with our consultant and really start to help draft what we're going to do from a strategic planning perspective. So we both met, both committees met in August. We're going to meet again. I believe one of them is meeting Monday. I can't remember which. But I planned one for Monday, so it's posted, I'm sure. Anne, which one is it? Strategic Planning will be meeting on Monday. And Rules and Procedure will be probably meeting two weeks from there.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you.
We're meeting on Monday?
Yes, you agreed to it in the minutes.
Before you go ahead, um-
Yes.
Mr. President, through you to Counsel Loesch, can I just ask a question on the, the process of the, where my ordinance stands on the general bylaw to ban retail sales of marijuana? That was sent back nine months ago. And I think you had some revisions to it and sent it on to council for some clarification. I just wanted to know what the status was of that.
So we were initially waiting for the zoning to be completed, which it has not. And we did make additional amendments to it in our past meeting and sent it to council for additional review. So when we get that back, we'll probably be able to move forward in lieu of zoning, because we, the zoning from the hearings that have been happening seemed to have gotten the, the, the direction it's going in. And now it's just more about language, ensuring that what we're trying to do was legally sound and it makes sense. So we're able to update that general ordinance to align with that sentiment and bring it back to the council. So we made amendments, I believe, in our last meeting and it's with council now. So we should have it in, if not two weeks, in October.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Budget and Finance met tonight. The thing of note for tonight was the Finance Department came and presented some preliminary free cash items describing the breakdown and the estimates. Still waiting to get that certified. And also, they told us that they're very close to closing out the last fiscal year, which is, which is very fast for this year. So, and we discussed a few other items.
Excellent. Thank you for that. All right, now we move to legislation for action, folks. And beginning with ordinance D-FY 19001, zoning ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made, motioned, discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Mr. Wood?
Um, I'll just say, remind everybody again, we saw this a while ago back in June and it's been vetted through the amendments through, I think, Planning Board and CED, Community Economic Development Committee. And so it comes back to you in the final form with the idea behind it is, is a developer will have incentives to do other beneficial things for the town in exchange for additional, additional zoning units within the zone to increase, increase the-
What am I looking for?
Density. Density, thank you.
Mr. Souza?
Yes. I've read through it a couple of times and there's a few things that I'd like to discuss. Number one, under the design guidelines, number 15, it states that the building could be close to the sidewalk. Okay? We're talking about a, up to a maximum of a 45-foot-high building, okay? Close to the sidewalk, does that mean four feet from the street? That's where the inside edge of the sidewalk is. And if that's the case, we had lengthy discussions at both the Community and Economic Development Committee along with the Planning Board and the, Jennifer, our Community and Economic Development Director, that when I tried to move the signs four feet in from the sidewalk, it was a great safety issue and they, and the council rejected it based on their stating. And over here, they want to put these 40-foot buildings right on the sidewalk. Now, it's in, what we're doing here, when I look through this, there are several areas where you're saying to the developer, it's up to you. You want to place this right on the sidewalk? Go right ahead. Our sidewalks in Bridgewater are four feet in from the curb, in most cases, if you have them at all. Okay? And that's not going to be a safety issue when all the parking must be behind the building and the people are coming out. Okay? And the other thing is, if you have a 45-foot-high building, we're talking four stories, and it states over here that 30% of the building must be commercial. Okay? It wasn't supposed to be that way. It states elsewhere that the entire ground level of the building, the first floor, will be business. Okay? And even if you have a three-story building, 30% is still not the whole first floor. Okay? So I think we need to get, what we're doing here in that case there, and then a few other little spots here and there, and I'll get to that in a second, is we're building an ordinance that's going to be sending these people to committees when we should be building an ordinance to make it clear what we expect of them and what we allow them to do. Not say, you can do this, but you got to go to the board. Going to the board costs these businesses money. It causes time delays. Okay? And that's what we're trying to get away with. I believe that's what we were trying to get away with. So that's, that's an item there that I think should be addressed. 40-foot building, 30%, that's not the whole first floor. Okay? The other one was parking. I see a tremendous problem with parking. You have a two-bedroom unit, one and two-bedroom units. They're allowing one car per unit, one car for visitors for every three units, shared parking for the businesses. I don't see anywhere that says X number of parking spaces for the businesses. In other words, if I come home from work and there's no parking space for me because the employees of the businesses or the customers of those businesses are parked in my parking spot, where do I go? Do I park in the street? Do I park down the street? I think that's an issue in parking with this whole plan that must be addressed. You have to say, so much for residents, so much for visitors, and so much for businesses. If, you know, I mean, like I said, I mean, where are they going to go? You're not putting any parking in there. And, and what you're saying is, if the couple has two automobiles, don't even apply because you can't come here because you must have only one in order to come live in my building.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. So just to refresh everybody on the path to come to the ordinance that's before us. So this is a, a mixed zone use of the central business district. It's not outliers of town. It's, it's central business district where I hear, I hear Mr. Souza's, you know, concerns about parking. But the effort to improve the central business district with municipal parking, on-street parking, off-street parking, and parking in general was greatly discussed and during the process of the evolution of this. The Economic Developer Director was a participant in the discussions, as was Patrick Skol from the Planning Board and Mr. Colombo and myself and a few others came, came in to comment. So that, we gave the Planning Board a lot of latitude in some of these decisions. So the- the Planning Board a lot of latitude in some of these decisions, so that, so they don't have to put the building four feet from the, from the street. It's an option. And the benefits of, of the piece is driven more by the review by the Planning Board of some of these benefits that are, that are built into here. So, I think there was really good participation during the process. It's an effort to improve our Central Business District as the first of many milestones that we're going to see. It's to bring more people into the district, and which will enhance our ability to bring more quality businesses into the district as well, and improve the facades that we see today. So, I, I hear the, I hear the concerns. I think we fully vetted a lot of those, and we've come up with a pretty good ordinance, so hopefully everybody supports it.
Okay, Mr. Colum Bodas. Thank you, Mr. Souza.
One important point to remember is that this ordinance really just gives the Planning Board the authority to grant a special permit. So, nothing is as of right. The Planning Board retains tremendous discretion, you know, with any, with each and every project if they, they can require more parking. To address the 30%, the percentage of the building required to be commercial, it's either the first floor must be all commercial, or 30% of the overall gross floor area must be commercial. So, that, that addresses that point. Yeah, I guess that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Souza?
I'm still completely confused. We're looking at the size of the buildings that that gentleman showed us here that night. We're bringing, he wants to bring in how much square footage? He's talking about restaurants, he's talking about small shops, he's talking about all kinds of things between these two businesses. How many employees are these businesses all going to hire?
More than Friendly's has right now, Mr. Souza.
Please?
More than Friendly's has right now.
Whereas, well, my pointing is, I'm not condemning the building, I think it's a great plan, I think it's great. But I think, before we jump into this, you really have to think about the problem with the parking, and we are definitely going to have a parking problem down there.
Ms. Loesch?
Well, I think those are very valid points. That's something for the company and the employees to figure out, not something that needs to be mandated by the government to tell them where to park, right? So, let's get the building built, and have businesses go in, and then have the bumper crop of like people circling around Central Square trying to find parking. But right now, if you need to find parking in Bridgewater, you can find it. The whole Broad Street never has cars on it. I've never had a problem trying to park at Bruno's, getting my nails done at LA Nails, Greyhound Tavern, like, there's never an issue for parking. And once we get more businesses, there may be, but that's not for us to legislate and put into writing. It's for the Planning Board to discuss and have it be approved or not approved. And if we dictate everything that a business wants to do, the business is not going to come to town. So, what we spoke to Jen Burke about, the Director of Economic Development, was that it's 1.3, and hopefully, people will be coming from other parts of town, so they're having dinner at Krispies, leaving their car in that lot, which they can, and walk up. We're really concerned about people moving their car one place to the other, and I don't think it's relevant to this actual ordinance, nor we should make any amendments. So, if we could vote, that would be phenomenal.
Are you moving the question?
I think we already have a motion in a second, don't we?
We're discussing.
We're in discussion. I believe Mr. Colum Bodas had his hand up as well. Somebody over here did. No, we're good?
We're good.
More discussion? I think it seems good. You had the motion. Where's the note? There's, it's a roll call vote?
It's in your hand.
Okay, so, roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one against.
Moving on to OFY 19-016, which is postponed to 9:25 due to no financial fincom disposition? Is that something we have to address?
I think you can just declare.
So, that'll be postponed till 9:25. Thank you very much.
Same with the next one?
As at BNC, Order OFY 19-017, also postponed to 9:25.
And I'd suggest you do the same thing to D on the...
Yeah, the D we discussed earlier, also going to be moved to 9:25 meeting. So, RFY 18-04 moved to 9:25. Moving us on to old business. Ordinance D-FY 18-08, zoning ordinance, Elm Street Retail Overlay. And, Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. President, this, let me just get to it, and then I'll be right with you. This, what you see in front of you is, you have it in, I believe, a heavily edited version, and then the council clerks provided you a paper copy of the clean version for your convenience. But Jennifer Burke, our, I mean, Economic Development Director, I think copied, well, actually wrote me a memo, which I've given you in your packets. Essentially, what you have in front of you in the edited version, you can see what was proposed to be edited and was actually voted on by the Community and Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board during their deliberations and after their vote. Then, you also have, and that, those edits are in, I believe, red and green, although you may not have it in front of you as color copies. But the majority of it is, is what was edited by the, those two committees. The edits in blue, if you recall, after the last council meeting, there was some question as to why we didn't pull out, or why, why the legislation didn't pull out testing facilities. So, we asked individual counselors to provide guidance to the council clerk, only so that she could draft appropriate minutes, or appropriate edits, rather. So, those edits are reflected there. Basically, what is changed from your last view of this is that testing facilities are proposed to be allowed by special permit in all of the commercial and industrial districts, and there is no limit on the number of special permits to be issued for those testing facilities. Keep in mind, retail facilities, manufacture, and cultivation facilities cannot be testing facilities as well. Testing facilities are standalone under the Cannabis Control Commission regulations. So, so that is what is in front of you, but happy to answer any questions you have.
So, just to kick things off, I'll make a motion to send to advertising.
Second.
And I'll make a motion to amend as indicated in our amendments.
Second that as well.
So, two motions made, two motions seconded.
And so, that having been said, just a quick question for the Town Manager. A testing facility has to be separate from a grower or retailer, but they can be next door. Can they be owned by the same company? I mean, there's no...
I don't believe they can be owned by the same company, but they, they can physically have to be, they could physically be next door to each other.
Further upstream?
Sure.
So, Marijuana Holding has Marijuana This and Marijuana Testing as separate entities underneath?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, all right. So, it's two different organizations. Perfect. Thank you.
We had two, two motions and two second, two second emotions made.
Well, we're on the amendment now.
All right.
Yeah.
And where are we with the amendment? Are we ready? No discussion on it? Any further discussion?
If, go ahead, Colum.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
I'm sorry, we're just doing the amendments now?
Correct.
Well, I just would like to make the point that testing facilities generate a lot of revenue for the town. There's a lot of real property, sophisticated technical equipment that the town can assess real property taxes on. So, that's the main motivation for this legislation.
I, I'd just like to point out that we're accepting, if, if my motion on the amendment passes, we're accepting the amendments. And then, if the vote to send to advertising happens, that means we're going to send it to advertising as is, as amended.
As amended, correct.
Yes. And so, you know, if anyone's going to come back in two weeks, or whenever this comes back to us, when the Planning Board can meet on it and whatnot, with amendments, tonight would be the great time to put them in, rather than having to delay the process more. Because, as you can see, this was initially introduced by Council Loesch on November 7, 2017, and I really hope it doesn't see its first birthday.
Point of information, it wasn't introduced by me, but I, I picked up sponsorship.
You picked up.
Along the way, as adopted mother.
It, it's been alive so long, it's...
Been orphaned once.
Do we have more discussion on the amendment as proposed? Mr. Gallagher has a question.
So, this would allow for a testing facility in the Central Business District of the town in the South Central Business, South Business District. And what's BUSB? Business B? What is, where is that? What location would that be?
I, I can look that up if you give me a second.
What, what, BUSB?
BUSB.
Business B.
Yeah, what is Business B? BUSB, space B? I don't know what that, but the point, so the Marijuana Testing Facility would not be allowed on Elm Street, or it could still be allowed out there?
It could be. It's industrial, Elm Street is industrially zoned, so it could be there.
It, it's my understanding, and Mr. Colum Bodas can correct me if I'm wrong, is this is a, this is a business that we wouldn't mind having wherever it could set up shop.
It's, yes, minimal impact.
That was the intent of the amendment, was to say, if you can get a testing facility up in any place that's kind of commercially, for lack of a better term, you can run it there.
Right.
And then, we'll generate the revenue from the taxes on all your nice special expensive equipment.
Right. It's very minimal impact to Butters or anyone nearby.
There's no odor from any of this testing that seeps out?
I don't believe so, no.
No, and there's, there's...
Filtration, like a bread, like a, like a bread plant.
And reading this too, these testing facilities, from what I understand, you'll drive by them, you don't even know they're there. There's no advertising, it is strictly regulated, people aren't walking off the street, bringing things in to get tested. You know, it'd be like a pharmaceutical testing facility as well. You, you, it has minimal impact. But let's keep in mind too, these facilities can be pretty big, so they're going to have to fit within the confines of the available space within the zoning. So, I don't think you're going to see storefronts on Broad Street of testing facilities.
But it could.
Good, good, Mr. Souza.
Right now, best of my knowledge, there's only one approved in the entire state, and there's a whole number of companies who are producing and manufacturing the product. So, you know, hopefully, if you get in there on a ground floor, whoever builds could grab a number of those places from all around here, so it could be a substantial-sized operation.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Question of, location of Business B District. There's one on the north side of Plymouth Street, east of, where is it? Just east of Hilltop Drive, the drive back to Great Hill Drive. And then, Business B is also from about Cottage Street, along Bedford, south of Cottage Street up until Flag, pretty much. So, those are the two Business B districts. Mr. Gallagher, you were asking.
Right. And, and if memory serves me correctly, I could be wrong. I think the state's goal is to have three, a minimum of three testing facilities up and running in a very short period of time. So, I think the first one was in, wasn't in Lowell, but it was like out in Leicester or something like that.
Salem.
Salem, I'm sorry. So, there are, there are two more that they're, they're looking to get up and running. Obviously, after that, you know, who knows if they're going to need any more. So, you know, that's another thing, just for point of information.
Other discussion on the amendment?
Question, question on the amendment, because I'm not sure which is the amendment, what's not the amendment. Limitation of two, that two in addition to the, or different than the medical dispensaries that are already existing?
Yeah, they say that in the...
Separate.
Amendment. Yeah, they say with no limit to the number of special permits allowed for Marijuana Testing Facilities.
Not testing facilities, I'm asking in general. So, and, and under the order, the first paragraph, third line, number of special permits allows a two, and to allow no more than two?
Correct.
So, is that in addition to the dispensaries that are already there?
Yes, because those aren't retail.
I thought you intended.
Yes, this, this is written specifically for recreational purposes. The medical marijuana ordinance was written specifically for medical. So, this is two, it could be the same facilities, but it, it has nothing to do with the medical facilities.
Right. So, the definition of marijuana establishment near the end of the page says marijuana cultivator, but doesn't separate the two. And I believe now that they are two distinct licenses, one for medical and one for recreational. So, does that mean we can have two recreational licenses in addition to the two medical cultivator places?
Yeah, radically, yes. The two have nothing to do with each other.
I just want to make sure, under this ordinance, that that's true for the, for the count?
Yes.
And, and in the original ordinance, I think the number two was used, but is there any reason that we're limiting it to, and I know there's been plenty of discussion on this, but since it's not retail storefront or any other business that consumers directly interact with, what is the concern about having more, more buildings on Elm Street that participate in this type of, of business?
Mr. President, Meg?
Yes.
So, my approach to this, Council Wood, is I think two is where people landed. If we run into an instance where we may have to increase that, correct me if I'm wrong, we could come back here and propose to increase that as well. I don't necess, am I, okay. So, I, I guess from my perspective, the, the two right now, I, I don't necessarily know how we're going to come up with a number, right? We, we, I think we've all, for the most part, not everyone, has fallen on two. If we get two in here, and then we've got other people inquiring, I think we'll have the ability to look at expanding and, and having more special permits. I think if we, if we try to come up with a number, or I don't think I would be in a, in a good place to have it unlimited, I think we do have to have a little bit of control over it, then I think it's going to make this a little bit more difficult to put into play.
I think an unlimited testing district may be excessive. Mr. Souza, followed by Mr. Colum Bodas, if you have...
There is some fear by people who live up on Elm Street and off Elm Street, that if we go and put more in there, and the way the talk is still going to have recreational marijuana sold, their neighborhood is going to become the recreational marijuana area. And they feel that it's bad enough if they have two, but if for some reason there's more, do you want to bring your children up in that same area? That's their thought, okay? You know, why, why dump it all on us? It's their idea, okay? You got the two facilities that are there, the, the, the medical marijuana, as it starts to grow, that's going to bring in more and more traffic to there. But that's one type of person. But when you go into recreation, and you have no control over the where these people can use this stuff, they can go and buy it, come out in a parking lot, munch on it, and leave there stoned, okay? And no one's going to bother them. But those people up in that area, they're really concerned about that. They, first of all, that's why they fought so long and hard, not to have recreational marijuana, not to turn around and tell them that, "We're going to put this ordinance in that says if somebody else comes down the street and says, 'We want to build a third one.'" one or a fourth one, we're going to grow and process medical marijuana, and then somewhere down the road, get enough people on this council to say, let's start selling it in town, could have three, four operations right there in a very short distance on that one street with all those people living in that area? I, I think we have to, you know, think a little bit about our neighborhoods.
So, Mr. President, point of information, this particular ordinance does not limit the testing facilities to Elm Street, correct?
Correct.
So I think we have to keep in mind that the discussion point that we're talking about right now is the testing facilities that can be put into town. I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Souza, but let's, let's keep on task, please.
Mr. Risky, miss?
I just follow up on Mr. George's point. Mr. Rollins, the, the general bylaw, the general ordinance that's coming out of the Rules and Procedures Committee shortly, would ban retail marijuana sales entirely, correct?
Correct.
So it wouldn't matter about two, or four, or 272 and a half, right? It would just be, you can't have a retail marijuana establishment in the town of Bridgewater.
Correct. With the exceptions that, and I haven't reviewed it yet, but I'm, I, my understanding is it didn't have the exceptions in, that are allowed in our town, which are cultivation, testing facility, and product manufacturing, but beyond those exceptions...
No one's, yeah, no one's going to be going in and buying something and eating their edible right in the parking lot, because we won't have a retail shop as people think of retail shops.
They can't do that under our current zoning that you all voted, I mean, it's very clear, so the zoning is...
Right, so I'm just, this is a long way of saying, I agree with Mr. George, let's move this to advertising.
Mr. Colombo, you had your hand up, is that done? Mr. Gallagher, you had your hand up after him?
Yes, I mean, I think that the way this is, this is written, it, I understand what, what, I didn't get everything I wanted in here. I wanted this, I wanted the marijuana product manufacturing taken out, or I wanted the two to be reduced to one. That's, that's the discussion we had a few months ago, and it went to the committee to look at and bring it back with amendments. So, this isn't what I wanted. I still, before we send it to advertising, Mr. President, we can continue to make amendments to this if we want to, where it goes to advertise, correct?
Correct.
And I'd like to offer an amendment that we strike out the word marijuana product manufacturing.
Where would this first strikeout occur?
This is adding marijuana cultivation and marijuana product manufacturing. Strike out the word marijuana product manufacturing. Because the initial presentation by the gentleman that owned the medical facilities were that, what they wanted was the cultivation. They didn't want, and I know anybody can come and do the product manufacturing, but we have banned retail marijuana sales and shops in Bridgewater, and, you know, this, this would kind of go with that, although I know they can't sell it there, no one can go in and buy it, but I'd like to, you know, heed to the, what the intent of the vote was in 2014, excuse me, 2016, and strike out product manufacturing.
Mr. Colombo.
I don't think the intent...
Point of order, is there a second to that?
I don't know if I had a second.
I don't know if that was an actual motion?
I made that in the form of a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilor Souza, I think, seconded.
Okay.
So now we can discuss it. I'll open a discussion.
Made and seconded, we want to let Mr. Colombo continue with...
I just would argue that the intent of the vote to ban sale of retail was do just that, and had nothing to do with manufacturing.
Mr. Souza.
Wasn't it recreational separated from medical? Okay, the medical marijuana? We telling them that they can go ahead and sell the medical marijuana out of that facility?
We have no choice in that, right?
No, I'm saying, that's, that's the way it's set up.
The two folks that have their businesses there to sell medical...
Right, so, but it's the recreational side that right now they can produce and sell wholesale out of town.
I would just, just for a point of order, relative to the proposed amendment, it's in direct contradiction to the zoning ordinance that you all have already voted in. So that will create a litany of issues, because what you're essentially saying is, you're, you're in essence prohibiting marijuana product manufacturing, when the initial ordinance said, we were prohibiting the retail sale or over the counter sale, and with the exception of marijuana cultivation, marijuana product manufacturing, and marijuana testing facilities. So if you strike marijuana product manufacturing, you've made no zoning for that particular use. And there's a couple of different ways to look at that. One could be that it's an allowable use everywhere, because the zoning's silent on it, which could create a whole litany of issues. Or we could come to the conclusion that we've now prohibited it, and now we have two ordinances that directly contradict each other. So I think that's a very problematic amendment. You all can vote as you'd like, but I would advise against that.
Take the vote. I don't, I don't, I think that, you know, we've, we've been discussing this, and we'll continue to discuss it, because there'll be another order coming forward, but I think...
So some, so...
I don't, I don't see where, I'll have to look at the other one, I don't know what other zoning there is out there.
Yes, Loesch?
Mr. Gallagher, just so I can understand this proposed amendment, the medical marijuana facilities currently make product, correct? And what you would like is that they don't make products for retail? It's the same product?
Not just them, any, I mean, even if we approve this, anybody could open up a facility...
To make product?
Make it.
Correct.
But, but yes.
It's, okay. And you just don't want, you're trying to make less of it?
Right.
In theory.
I'd like to see that, that we do not sell it to a facility, to a recreational shop that's going to go up in the towns around us. That's really for that. It's very simple, I think, it's very simple, that's what I'd like to see.
I don't understand why, like what, because it's not going to lessen the marijuana in the state of Massachusetts, it's not going to lessen the marijuana, yeah.
I understand it, but we have, we have that authority as a council, and I might be in the minority here, but I'll be on record. That's the point. The point is that this town voted, that they did not want recreational marijuana in the town. That's how this town voted. Now, there was a lot of confusion regarding that, that ballot initiative, and that's why the legislature got involved, to clarify it, to say, okay, if you're a yes town, you can do this, if you're a no town, you can do this, and that, just changed everything. And that's why I think that we're becoming more clear as a council, because we've been talking about it for so long, but many towns are still struggling with what to do, bringing it back to a vote in the town or not. We're not, we've already made our decision, so I think that what the intent of the voter back then was, was not just shops, but it was retail marijuana, and this is, this is a form of that, in my opinion. And I, I, we've had this discussion, I think we had this discussion before, I believe.
We've had everyone...
I'm going to move, I'm going to move the question.
Second.
For...
The amendment?
Mr. Gallagher's amendment?
Yes, on, on Mr. Gallagher's amendment, I'm moving the question. I'd just like to vote whether we want to stop debate and keep going or not.
Okay. So those in favor of, I'm sorry, those in favor of Mr. Gallagher's amendment?
No, no, we're going to vote to move the question.
Going to vote to move the question.
Okay.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Right.
Well, this is just to get to a vote.
Right.
I've done listening to talking.
Okay.
End discussion.
End, end of discussion, so, let's move to have the vote. Those in favor?
Of moving the question?
Of moving the question, yes.
Aye.
Aye. Those against?
No.
No.
Aye, we need to count, because it needs to be six to three.
Who would you like?
In favor?
In favor of moving the question, yes. Okay, I can talk for a while too, guys, so pull up a seat.
Mr. Wood.
I'll be voting against the amendment for three reasons. One, which is our town attorney brought up before, this substantially changes the ordinance before us, and in my opinion, it's, the substantial change would require to go back to committees, not to advertising. Secondly, we have banned retail, retail shops, and the product manufacturing is, cannot be sold in a retail form of, in Bridgewater. So I think we've handled that situation. And thirdly, similar to the testing, if you've taken a tour of the, of the facilities out on Elm Street, you'll know that the product manufacturing substantially requires oil, and the machine to extract the oil is a highly sophisticated machine and related processes around that. So there's another piece of equipment that has a lot of tax benefits, so that, that's why I would prefer to keep the option open for someone to take on product manufacturing. Thank you.
Okay. Another discussion. I don't hear anybody. What's next?
A vote on Mr. Gallagher's amendment.
We're going to vote on Mr. Gallagher's amendment. I read my chicken scratch. All right. So, time for a voice vote for Mr. Gallagher's amendment. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Are we good on that?
Mr. President, could I make another amendment, if I could? Hopefully this should be short and sweet. I'd like to make an amendment that we reduce...
Yes, you may.
That on line three, that we reduce the allowed to, 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 from two to one, and to allow no more than one marijuana establishment per special permit. So it's changing allowing to, from two to one. That's my intent.
Second, for discussion.
Okay. What's been made, seconded, Ms. Loesch?
I have a question through you to the town clerk, attorney, or manager. If we've already voted on this once and voted it down, can we continue to vote on it again? Thank you.
It's just an amendment.
Okay.
Mr. Souza?
Different than zoning.
What I'm, what I'm thinking is, we allow two, this is telling us, right?
I'm sorry?
Allow, we allow two operations? How many do we currently have on Elm Street right now?
Two medical facilities.
I'm talking about growing and processing facilities.
Are they both actively growing for recreational?
We have two growing, processing, medical only, going to be selling in medical.
Right.
Two, we already have two. So you're saying all we can have is two? No, let's just say it.
I, I believe that what this does is allow each, each facility to have two, two options. Each facility, so in essence, they would have four licenses for medical and cultivation, and for medical and product manufacturing. So this would allow for them, doesn't mean someone else can't come in and do the cultivation and the product manufacturing too.
We're talking special permits.
Mr. Souza, when we were on the committee together and sat through these hearings, the purpose of limiting it to two was in hopes that the people who are already currently doing would apply for these said permits, and we would have them do exactly what they're doing, but for the retail side, which you agreed to and actually approved, and we sent it back. So that's why I'm just trying to clarify, that that's what that purpose is of having it to two. It was actually three, and we lessened it to two, to ensure that it was just staying within what we already had, to your earlier point.
I, I know there's already two.
Okay.
It looks like we've got an argument going on here, that if we, you can't reduce the number to one, of course, because we already have two, and you're not going to add more. In my, I, I don't see where this is allowing additional operations.
It is, and they're only doing it for recreational purposes, because the medical marijuana facilities may choose not to want to produce any recreational marijuana for the business, or for the, or whatever's happening in Massachusetts, then we can get another organization there to do just that.
What we have there now, we all agree to, in one way or another.
Which is for medical use only, and this specifically is for recreational, which is different than medical marijuana, or cannabis.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're saying we could have two recreational marijuana facilities with a special permit?
Correct.
The reality is, medical marijuana, or cannabis, whatever we call it these days, to be correct, is going to go away. I mean, there's just not going to be that market, Colorado's proved that. So the only way those two businesses are going to be able to survive is to morph themselves into what we put into this retail, you know, recreational overlay usage. And if we want them to go out of business, that's great, but if we don't, then we need to give them an opportunity to have a chance.
The, the, Colorado sees, what was that, trying to recollect from the committee, 80% reduction in medical, on average in that state, so...
Mr. President, last time we had a vote on this, we shot it down.
Last, on what?
Councilman, Councilman Colombo amended it, okay? He amended it, and that allowed the facilities that we currently have to grow and process recreational marijuana, but not sell it in Bridgewater, so they can act as a distributor outside of town. But that's where we sit right now, okay? So, so why are we playing around with another recreational one over here, saying, yeah, let's have two facilities that are going to sell recreational marijuana, when the people in this town voted it down? We all voted it down, and here we are back again today, saying, let's have two of them.
Point of information, correct me if I'm wrong, but the special permitting is not for recreational sales in Bridgewater, it's for manufacturing and distributing wholesale outside of the town. Am I correct on that? Can we please stop mixing the words about what we're doing in this? That is what causes people to be misinformed and causes a lot of problems. This is strictly about special permitting for manufacturing and distributing outside of Bridgewater. Let's, let's be careful how we position this, so we're not misleading people on what we're discussing.
What I'm trying to say is, we already addressed that with the amendment from our council member here last time, when he made the amendment to that ordinance that allowed those two places to manufacture, to grow, manufacture, and distribute recreational marijuana. According to that ordinance, the change that he made on it, and it's out there that we all approved, what do we need this one for, is what I'm driving at? You already have it. Pull it up, let's see what happened that day.
That's a zoning, that was...
That was zoning. This is, this is now the ordinance on special permitting.
The use in permitting.
Okay, I mean, am I...
This is, this is matching up what we...
Exactly, exactly.
It's the next...
What we talked about before was to take the zoning and then morph the ordinance on the permitting to match the zoning. I...
Mr. Colombo?
Am I missing something here?
That, that was what I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Colombo?
Maybe it's not a significant point, but I just want to push back on the notion that the town in the ballot initiative somehow overwhelmingly rejected the retail sale of marijuana. It was a margin of 158 votes on that. 50.6% of the town voted to restrict retail sale, 49.4 voted to allow it. So I just wanted to make that point, that there's not some overwhelming majority will of the people to, to ban retail sales. I'm not suggesting we do that.
I will add that that's retail sales.
Right.
We're not talking about retail sales.
I just want to, addressing a point that has been made, that, yes...
I make a motion to move the question.
Second.
Councilor George made a motion to move the question, and was seconded by Mr. Colombo. I'm assuming you don't want to discuss your motion?
No, I don't.
Okay, so...
Point of information, though, what is the question?
That's what I was just going to ask, thank you.
The question is, to vote on his amendment.
Two to one.
For the, for the, moving the two to one in line four.
Three.
So this is on moving, this vote is on moving the question?
To move the question of reducing that to two.
Okay.
From two to one.
So it needs to be, it needs to be six, it needs to be six to three.
You got to vote to move the question first.
First we vote to move the question, and is that a six to three? Move the question, okay, so...
It's got to be two tarts.
Let's raise hands instead of saying aye. Uh, let's raise hands instead of saying aye.
I say move the, move the question, I don't care.
You're to move the question. There we go. That was unanimously voted to move the question. Now comes the question, or the amendment made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by someone, Ms. Loesch, same address as before, to change the number of those special permits allowed to, from two to one. Those in favor of that motion?
Aye. One. That was a lonely aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Oh. Okay. That brings us to the amendment.
Back to the amendment as a...
Unless anyone else has amended.
Well, we still have the amendment as a whole, as a...
Yeah, you gotta still vote on the amendment initially.
The actual amendment.
Right.
Do you like the clean copy of the amendment or not?
I move that we accept the clean copy as presented.
Well, the motion was made by Mr. Fitzgibbons to accept it as amended, in layman's terms, the clean copy, as in, we see it here labeled as such. So, um, those in favor of accepting the amendment, and the amended clean copy?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
One opposed? Also on the, the, that Mr. Fitzgibbons' wheelhouse was...
Now on the main motion to send to advertising.
That you had originally made and was seconded, those in favor of moving into adverti...
Back to discussion on that?
Back to discussion for advertisement?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Wood?
Uh, you probably noticed I supported the amendment. I, I really do appreciate all the work that's gone in by a lot of people. And overall, I'm not concerned about the, the item. I'll be voting against advertisement, though. I, I think that the reason we needed this was because the council forgot, when we passed the original restriction to limit the zoning, and thus additional work was required. And so I like the original zoning as described, so I won't be supporting this going to advertising. Thanks.
Thank you. Other discussion? So now we're gonna vote to go to advertising. Those in favor going to advertising?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
One. That can go behind us. So it comes back from advertising. Now we move to ordinance FY eighteen oh fifteen, zoning ordinance, zoning map amendment, South Business District, alignment place.
So there's no action on this, because we decided at the meeting that since we are doing an overall zoning, um, study and changes, it didn't make sense to do this one at this time. There's no harm, there's no foul, there's no urgency, after hearing from the proponent, people who lived in the area, and from the person, from our economic development director as well. So that's why they're, we're just not moving on this.
Okay.
Point of information, so I mean, you're gonna withdraw this?
Yes.
Or should we refer, yeah, we should withdraw, if we're waiting on comprehensives on them?
Correct.
That's no action needed from a withdrawal? No vote on, okay.
I'm moving to withdraw my motion.
She's moving to withdraw, so.
She's the sponsor, so I think.
She can withdraw.
Sponsor can just withdraw without a vote.
Without a...
Oh, perfect, it's gone.
Good, withdrawn. Ordinance D FY eighteen oh sixteen, general ordinance, amend administrative codes, any born of appeals, membership.
I can speak to how we got to it from the Rules and Procedures Committee. We had this come as a zoning ordinance as well, that was voted down, so we were going along with the previous will of the council and realized that this was not something that needed to be put through as a general ordinance.
Withdrawn?
No, it's not withdrawn, we have to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We just voted not to recommend, Rules and Procedure Committee, where it was living.
Let's go to advertising, though. I don't think we can vote on it.
If we, if we wanted to send it to advertising, yes, so, that would be the appropriate motion if someone wanted to continue it.
Are you voting to send it to advertising?
But then can we vote on it?
If someone wanted to make a motion to send to advertising, regardless of the Rules and Procedures Committee not recommending it, I think so.
No, I don't, I don't.
Mr. Colomos?
Just a point of information, we vote not to send it to advertising. Does it continue to live? Is it a zombie measure?
Much.
There's no way to...
I don't wanna make a zombie.
Kill it altogether?
No.
Okay.
Unless the proponent withdraws it.
Right, thanks.
The proponent is not...
Just as a matter of information, you could vote to table. That's probably the effective way to do it.
That's coming. Okay, so let's, uh...
I'll move to table this.
And second?
Second.
Motion to table, made by Ayesha, Ms. Loesch, and seconded by Mr. Colomotos. George, you can see I'm wearing down here, folks.
Same glasses?
Yeah, it's, you're both on my left side. Any discussion? Hearing, seeing, none? Those in favor of tabling this? Aye?
Aye.
Those against? Okay. And we can move to new business. Ordinance D FY nineteen zero two, general ordinance, amend administrative code temporarily pairs on private ways.
Mr. President, I can, I can add some background to this, if you'd like. This ordinance, which Councilor Souza graciously offered to sponsor at my request, actually is a little bit of housekeeping. It fixes an issue that we didn't know we had. We've very often done work on private ways, and when I say that, I mean mostly sewer and water installations, which the abutters pay for, but, but ultimately, those, those installations are town installations. So we don't have a mechanism, a proper mechanism, in our ordinances, under which to do that properly. So this, this solves that problem. And I will tell you that this issue came up as we're trying to help the owners on First Street, which is one of our industrial streets off of Elm Street, in their efforts to install sewer. So in order for them to incur a betterment, in order to pay for the installation of sewer, which is what the plan is, we need this, this authorization as an ordinance. So that's, that's why right now, but also why generally, we need to get this voted.
Motion to refer to the Rules and Procedures Committee?
So moved, seconded.
I mean...
Okay, seconded by Ms. Loesch. Those in favor of moving to rules and procedures? Aye?
Aye.
Against? Okay, moving on, next to nineteen dash zero one nine.
And make a motion, we just take this as a first reading?
Take this as a first reading?
And not send it anywhere unless the town manager thinks otherwise?
Okay, so this is the first reading?
Second.
Motion made and seconded?
Does it need to go to Finance Committee? I don't think so.
Do we vote for those in favor of making this the first reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Okay. Does that leave us to discuss this at all?
Well, I'm sorry.
We're, we're moving on, I don't, no discussion on this one?
It's, I'll tell you what it is, for public benefit. This is a rescinding of the authorization that the council voted, I believe, at two meetings ago, for the American Tower lease. I neglected to change the, the number, essentially, in the, in the original ratification. So it was my error, I didn't want to call it a typo, because it does, the ratification does carry some, some importance. So we're just altering it. The budget and finance, and finance committees have vetted it as, as it has been negotiated, and have approved it. So it was just my, my error in not correcting the, the term of the, of the lease, first time around.
Okay, thank you, sir. On to order, FY nineteen oh dash oh two oh, brought by Mr. Counselor Wood, prohibiting retail marijuana tax proceedance.
Make a motion to refer to the budget and finance and finance committees?
Motion made, motion made. Any seconded?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. A discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No, I just, I'd let Mr. Wood talk about it, but I think that's where it properly belongs at the moment.
Sure. So you can read it yourself, I, I think it's worth, it's not just crazy bill going off again about, you know, the marijuana tax. So I've had a number of people come up to me to talk about this, which is that the state is going to tax retail sales at seventeen percent. So it's six point two five percent, plus an additional excise tax of ten point seven five percent, for a total of seventeen percent. And there was talk in the state, at the State House, of limiting that, distribution of that tax to only those communities that accepted retail sales, and prohibiting it from others. This tax may go into the general fund, and they may not ever identify it as a specific local aid item. We see local aid specifically, and we also, in some cases, we also see our own excise tax as a line item, our own food tax as a line item, our own hotel tax as a line item, that we come back as general revenues, and those are easy to identify. This may never happen, but I did have a number of people say, it's unfair that the town of Bridgewater benefits from the sales in other communities. And so I worked up the numbers. If you do nothing else, except for reading the document that's in the footnote, it's a, it's a very well-written document by the Massachusetts Department of Health, the baseline study, that's where the numbers came from. This year, the State House, the state budget includes the sixty-three million dollars in revenue. Everyone knows that won't happen, because there's no retail licenses that are in operation yet, never mind the seventy-five that are in the first phase. So this is, this is for discussion, we'll have it in committee, discuss it, people can send comments, we'll arrange for it, and then have a discussion back when it gets here. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Well, I, I don't think this warrants leaving this, this council. I think to send it anywhere is totally inappropriate. I really do. I think that this is a hypothetical bunch of numbers that are not before us through any state aid or anything at this, at this moment. I think that this order being put forward now, and I'd love to know who, who these people are that would say, hey, I don't think we should accept, accept this money if we're not going to sell recreational marijuana. Because I do think the pot of money that will come from the state regarding this, has everything to do with cultivation, has everything to do with other elements, not just the pot shops that other communities will open. And I think that that's what this might say. We heard earlier this evening, from Council Fitzgibbons, through the Public Safety Committee, that the police need bodies. We've heard that the fire department is gonna need some perhaps capital improvements down the road, and our highway department. It would have made better sense, it would have made better public policy for a proposal to come forward to say that any revenue that we get from the state, from the sale of recreational marijuana, we can put aside for perhaps of a public safety resource officer, because there will be an impact on our police department when recreational marijuana is, is on sale or for sale in our surrounding communities, when they come back here and drive through town. And we heard earlier, a couple of months ago, that distracted driving is on a huge increase throughout the state, and it will also be a huge impact when retail marijuana comes into play. So it would be better if we earmark that money to help our public safety officials have to deal with the ramifications of retail sales, because there will be an impact on our community. Or it would have been better to put something forward, to perhaps donate that money to a substance abuse program, for people that are overcoming addictions. So to return and to send this money back to the, to the state and say, no, thank you, we're not selling it, it makes absolutely no good public policy.
If I could?
Yes, Mr. George.
So I'm, I'm in total support of Council Gallagher's statement. I, I also like to approach it from this perspective, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but when the, when the town of Bridgewater voted against casinos, I don't recall any ordinance that was put out there that the town would not benefit from any revenue from any casino, because it's morally wrong that we voted no against it, yet there are casinos in Massachusetts. I, I really look at this as, as a statement of, well, Bridgewater didn't vote for the big picture, so we shouldn't gain any benefits from it. It's a slippery slope that we put committees into discussion points around things that are positioned as morally wrong. I, going through my civics classes in my head, I don't remember doing any types of law or ordinances that are based on morality, per se. Per se. You could have that argument. But I really think, to, to Council Gallagher's point, we have enough people doing enough things in committees, that we shouldn't be putting things in here that just do not make sense. That's my opinion.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I actually agree with Mr. Gallagher and Mr. George on the, on the substance of, I would never vote for it if it came before us, but I believe it's within our charter that anything affecting finances of the town has to go to the Finance Committee. So it's appropriate to go there, because it was introduced to us, it needs to be vetted by the Finance Committee. So, you know, that, that's the only reason I sent it there. I mean, it's, it's like asking Wellesley not to take lottery aid, because Chelsea pays more in than Wellesley does, to me.
So, to that question, we don't, I mean, if we so choose, it would go there, we don't have to send it to committee, we can, we can stop it right here. Correct? I guess, that's my discussion point.
It's had a first reading, so it'll come up for a second reading next time, and it'll, we can't consider it if it hasn't, if it hasn't gone there, so we have, we have to do our quote-unquote job, ministerial job of just sending it there, in my opinion. But I may be wrong, we can defer to the lawyer and ask him.
Well, you guys have already done it, you can vote to table this, I mean...
That was gonna be my next question.
Okay, well, there you go.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Well, there's already a motion on the floor to, to move it, right? So does the motion to table take precedence?
We'll have to look at our rules.
We had three, we had three floating motions earlier tonight, so...
I believe it probably does, based on...
It does. It does. Move the question. Stops discussion and has to be voted on immediately, no matter where you're at.
That's moving the question, but you're tabling.
Table, no, I'm not moving the question, sorry, table.
So tabling takes precedence?
It's getting, it's getting very warm in here.
We're not gonna be able to get to council comments, because it'll be ten thirty.
So...
So ta, move to table, will take precedence?
Take precedence.
And then whatever happens with that, you move on to the next step.
So I put the motion on, I don't know if anyone seconded.
I have a point of order question.
Okay, Mr. Colomos?
Mr. Fitzgibbons, I think rightly suggests that our charter requires that we send it to not our council committee, but to the Finance Committee. So I don't think we have any choice in that, right?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing that point. What I'm saying is, it shouldn't go anywhere. It shouldn't go to the Finance Committee. If that's where it needs to go, they've got other things to work on. I don't think this warrants us even moving it to the Finance Committee.
But if, if our charter requires that, don't we need to follow our charter?
I think that's only if we actually do approve.
We approve, if we approve it to go to committee.
And the table is taking precedence over that in the order?
Correct.
So first, we will take the motion to table this, that's been made and seconded, and vote on it. So that's what we're voting on. Those in favor of tabling?
Well, comments first on, I think we can still discuss tabling, correct?
Yes, correct.
So I, I want to address Mr. George's comments about the casinos. So at one point, there was a business owner in town trying to apply for a casino, and now it's access with six hundred departments and everything else. And at the time that the dog track was thinking about working up for a casino, Mr. Dutton and others were working with, I forgot the state agencies, but to work out mitigation pre... processes. So you could look at, at, you could argue that the reason we want to take the taxes from, uh, generated in another municipality as mitigation funds, but, um, we, we haven't seen any problem, we haven't defined any problem, so why should we take $600,000 next year in mitigation funds when we haven't defined a problem of, of dangerous driving? And on top of that, uh, the, we spent an hour arguing to open up a new liquor store that is gonna create a driving issue by itself, we all know that. Um, so I, I think, I think if this just goes to committee, sure, you can come back next time and table it, but at least it gets into committee, gets discussed, and then comes back with, with other numbers.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I, my view is this doesn't need to go to the Finance Committee. I don't think this rises to the level of what the Finance Committee's role is according to the charter. This is not an expenditure, this is not an appropriation, this is a hypothetical, uh, scenario. We could use the same argument for the, um, the proposal that Council would brought forward for the, um, reserve policy, um, revenue policy. That was never approved by the Finance Committee. There could be arguments made for the, for the develop, the zoning we just approved down on, um, on Main Street, which would impact housing and taxes and all that. We could make an argument that anything come before us has a dollar sign to it, although this has specific numbers in it, I don't think it rises to the level of what the Finance Committee, Finance Committee's role is, um, in my view. Having said that, I still think it should stay here or be tabled to, does it have to be tabled to a date certain or just what happens if it's tabled?
Me, counsel, not me.
If it's tabled, it just comes back next time?
No, it's done.
Okay.
It's essentially done.
Ms. Loesch?
Um, to Mr. George's point, the reason this is, the morality part, that, the angle that, in which you're coming at it, makes it frivolous, to be honest with you, because we're not not getting money from Lakeville, or Plainville's casino because it's morally wrong, we're not not getting money from other things that we might consider morally wrong, albeit strip clubs or wherever it goes through the state to comes back to Bridgewater that we don't actually allow. So if you were to have gone a different route and said it was to mitigate, um, public safety, but
If I can address that?
I'm not done talking. Um, you
But you specifically said me, so I should be able to address that?
Align, what I'm done talking.
Certainly will. Yes.
So I'm also voting to table this because this isn't the first time that you have presented something that we knew was never going to pass, but it was for the point of discussion. If that is the case of what you're trying to do, then just put things on, the things for discussion, like when you were trying to ban smoking in town that we knew was not going to happen, um, because we were banning marijuana and because it was a health risk, we also never banned alcohol. So I, I will not be supporting, I will be supporting tabling it so we don't ever have to discuss this again unless you write a new one.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. So the difference is that we never banned casinos. We, in fact, would have to allow a strip club because it's zoned in Bridgewater. We cannot ban adult recreation. We cannot ban brick and mortar, uh, stores like that. We have not banned other activities. We have specifically banned the ability for a shop to open and sell a specific product. And so we're hypocritical if we say we're gonna ban that activity yet benefit from the taxes related to that activity. That's the difference.
So Council, may, may I?
Yes.
So correct me if I'm wrong, we banned the sale, but I don't think it's illegal for residents to have recreational marijuana in Bridgewater. It's not illegal for a resident of Bridgewater to go to another town, buy it, come into town and have recreational marijuana. Um, so you, you talk about mitigation for casinos to be in other towns, well, I guess this is our mitigation for other, mitigation for other towns selling recreational marijuana that will end up in our town.
We have an abundance of marijuana in our town. Private residences throughout this town, inside the bedrooms, inside the kitchens, outside. It's all over.
They're on a tangent.
Well, it's against the law for you to see it, has to be out of view.
Can we move the, can we?
So we have no further discussion on the motion to table. So now we will move to vote on the motion to table that's been made and seconded. Those in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
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 Those against?
No.
No.
We moving on to next one?
Yes, thank you.
Um, I make a motion to move this to, this is the establishment of Town Manager Goals, I make a motion to move it to the, uh, Strategic Planning Committee?
Second.
Made and seconded, those in favor of moving to Strategic Planning?
Do we have anything in our packet?
It's on the other side of the marijuana, it was double printed.
We're conserving paper.
Against conserving paper, rightfully so.
If you go to the marijuana
Rightfully so.
So we hit a first and a second, so if I can explain, um, a while ago, and I don't know how long ago, we did have manager goals. I don't think we've had recent goals that have been published or, or read or, uh, or followed up in the council. So this is an opportunity for Strategic Planning to, to refresh those goals and come up with fresh ones and re, and return those to our consideration within a reasonable amount of time. Hopefully that's not a year, but, you know, something much less. Excellent.
Mr. Colmotos?
Can I ask a related question? And that is, when is the town manager's contract up? Anyone know that?
December.
Do you know?
Okay. Word on the street is, it's December.
Right, so that makes this actually quite time-sensitive, right?
It's too late. But yes.
Never too late.
It's always too late. Um, per your actual contract, this needed to be given and vetted by, by their
Next week?
September 1st? It's September 11th, and we won't be actually talking about it until October, so I think Post would be against what we've aligned to in his contract, so it's something to look forward to if we decide to renew his contract in December, um, for 2029. And on the point of information, I feel like we have another ordinance around Town Manager Goals, um, but I just have to figure out what it is, so it's not.
I'm sure I can find it.
Okay, great. So, okay. I wanted to make sure we look at that when it gets to committee, that we're not duplicating efforts?
Uh, yes, Mr. Gallagher?
I, I think that, um, and I don't know where the appropriate time to, to do this, I think that a couple people, maybe the Strategic Planning ought to look at, you know, extending the town manager's contract to a point, um, until we have these set, because there's, there's no way, whatever goals are set, you're not gonna give them a month to get them done, so his contract, I think a discussion needs to be held by somebody or us collectively in executive session, what to do at the end of December for him. Let's just throw it out there.
Did we vote to move this? That's all been done, okay, so we're on to 19 dash oh twenty-two?
I don't think we
No, we didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't?
Moved it.
Oh, we didn't vote? Okay, so we
Committee.
We have
Strategic Planning.
Yeah, we're move Those in favor of moving this to Strategic Planning? Aye?
Aye.
Against? Thank you. Maybe, uh, next meeting I'll bring coffee. Iced coffee, because it's 83 in here, with 60% humidity.
Motion to refer order oh FY, FY 19 oh two-two to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees, hope this will be less controversial.
Second.
Moved and seconded, um, Mr. Fitzgibbons and Ms. Loesch have discussions? None? Those in favor of moving to, uh, 19 dash oh two-two to, uh, Budget and Finance and Finance Committee? Aye?
Aye.
Against?